Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for taking time out of your very, very busy schedules to be with us this morning. This is the second meeting of the Budget Committee of the General Assembly of the State of New Jersey. We hold three meetings which, where we invite the public to please join with us and to share with us the various concerns that they may have. This is the second such meeting. The first was held at Montclair State College, Montclair State University, excuse me, I date myself, just a few days ago. Another meeting will be held in Trenton. Let me go over, if you will forgive me, some ground rules in terms of this morning, just so that we're all on the same page. Number one, respectfully, if I could impose, if you have a cellphone, if you could please put it on mute or silent, we'd be most appreciative. If you need to have a conversation with someone next to you or besides you, if we could impose on you to have the conversation immediately outside these chambers, the acoustics are such that we hear everything that is being said, and it is difficult, if not, forgive me, disrespectful to other speakers who are here. If you have materials that you would like distributed to members of this committee, on my right and on my left, or, excuse me, on my right are members of the Office of Legislative Services, and they would be pleased to take the materials and distribute them to us. Everyone will be given a total of four minutes, and four minutes only to speak, and I've been accused of being a bit draconian, and it is a reputation well deserved, in imposing on you to keep to that time limit. There is a light box that you can see directly in front of you. When the green light is on, you're great. You'll have three and a half minutes to speak while the green light is on. A half a minute will then be given to you in additional. The light will turn to yellow, suggesting to you that we'd appreciate it if you could sum up your remarks. When the red light turns on respectfully, we would ask you, please, to end your remarks. We know there are things that you might want to say, that you've not been given the opportunity to say. We apologize, but we know that there are friends and neighbors who are with you today who can perhaps carry along those conversations and provide additional clarity as is necessary. If you have questions, we suggest that you ask them during your presentation, rather than interrupt your presentation and ask this panel to respond. The reason I say that is, number one, I don't know if people will want to respond, and more importantly, two, it will eat into your four minutes of total time. So again, we want to be fair to everyone, to the extent that we can be. We are blessed to have with us members of both the Republican as well as the Democratic staff. If you have any questions, they would be most happy to be of assistance, as would members of the Office of Legislative Services. I'm joined today by colleagues on my left from the Democratic Party and on my right from the Republican Party. That's traditionally how we do things in Trenton. Forgive us for exporting them to you as well. And it's a great pleasure to acknowledge all of my, my friends, my associates, and my colleagues who are with us today. For opening remarks, I believe we have the pleasure of the Mayor of Collingswood being with us today. Mayor, you're here?
Yes, sir.
Please, if we could ask you to see, and we thank you and your community for welcoming us.
Thank you, and welcome. We're happy to host you as we do every year. Wish you the best of luck in your work. Just real quickly, the building you're in, an old Scottish Rite facility, this building is one of the redevelopment projects that the boroughs had, and above us is a thousand-seat auditorium, which you can check our website for the concerts to go on here, and enjoy town while you're here, even though this is not necessarily the most enjoyable of topics. But I wish you the best, and thank you so much for choosing us. Thanks.
Mayor, thank you, thank you again. One last note, if I may. If you have special circumstances, and that is, a child who needs to go to see, to see the doctor, a parent, or a neighbor, or friend who needs to be taken somewhere for whatever reason, please let our staff know, and we'll try to move your position. Everyone has a most busy schedule. We appreciate that, and we recognize that as well. I would also like to acknowledge and invite, if they would like to have a few remarks, we have with us Assemblywoman Jones. Assemblywoman?
I just want, on behalf of all of us in Camden County, South Jersey as well, to welcome you here, to thank you for coming here. There are a lot of people behind me that I know very well, who are going to put forth wonderful arguments for the things that are very necessary for our society to move forward. So, on behalf of the Fifth Legislative District, which is not where Collingswood is, but if you spit out those windows, you're in the Fifth District, and if you drive just a few blocks that way, you're in the Fifth District. So, on behalf of the Fifth Legislative District, I welcome you, and I want to acknowledge also that we have two Assemblypeople from the Fourth Legislative District here, Gabrielle Mosquero and Paul Moriarty. So they have joined us as well. You see how important you are to those of us in South Jersey. Thank you again, and God bless.
Thank you, Assemblywoman. We're very flattered by your welcome and your kind remarks.
Yes, and I would stay and listen, by the way, except that I'm welcoming 124 National Guard troops home in Cherry Hill out of there.
We are similarly pleased to acknowledge and welcome Assemblywoman Mascara. Assemblywoman, would you like to say a word or two?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the committee. Just want to say welcome, but I just would like to yield my time to constituents here that are here at the committee, members of the Lindenwald Board of Education. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. And third, but certainly not least, the kind Assemblywoman, Assemblywoman Moriarty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, committee members. Thank you for being here in South Jersey today. It's important that our committees get around the state and learn more about, you know, the geography, and the terrain, and the people. So I thank you for coming here today, and thank you for having a meeting earlier today with some of our constituents that have important issues. Wish you well today, and we'll be here for some of the testimony. Thank you again for being here.
Thank you, sir. And thank you to all of our colleagues for your generosity and making time out of your very, very busy schedules to be with us. We have a few slight revisions to the agenda as proposed. First, we'll hear from three representatives from the Lindenwald Board of Education, please. And if we can just ask, oh, let's to have the light bar functional, please.
Chairman, Chair, and members of the State Budget Committee, thank you for the opportunity to communicate the impact that flat funding and the 2% levy cap has had and continues to have on the Lindenwald community, especially our children. At the end of the day, we only ask that you treat us fairly. In fiscal year 2009, the first and only year that the School Funding Reform Act was funded, the Lindenwald School District provided desperately needed tax relief to the residents of Lindenwald while presenting a budget that they believed to be fiscally responsible. Six years later, we find ourselves unable to provide a thorough and efficient education for our children with a budget that's under adequacy and over the local fair share. So what's changed in Lindenwald since 2009? Enrollment has soared from 2009 to 2,779 students pre-K to 12, representing a growth of nearly 500 students from the time the funding formula was put in place. The poverty level has increased significantly from 69% of our students receiving free and reduced meals in 2012 to 80% today. Our English language learner population has skyrocketed. We recorded 432 limited English proficient students on our most recent ASA report compared to only 155 limited English proficient students in 2009. Yet, our state funding in Lindenwald has remained essentially flat. The School Funding Reform Act formula was designed to adjust funding based on enrollment increases and decreases and provided for weighted calculations for at-risk factors, including poverty and limited English proficiency, recognizing that at-risk students require additional services to be successful. We're not able to provide our children with the programs and the services that they deserve or keep pace with more affluent districts who are not as heavily dependent on state funding. The 2% cap has had the unintended consequence of widening the gap between the rich and the poor in New Jersey, as the 2% cap is based on the public tax levy portion only, which is considerably lower in impoverished communities. In Lindenwald, the 2% cap equates to approximately $234,000 on a $38 million budget. While in a more affluent community with the same $38 million budget, for example, a district whose public tax levy is, say, $25 million, 2% would equate to $500,000. Over time, the gap between the rich and the poor has widened, while funding appears on the surface to remain stable with the mantra being, "Hold harmless." On average, the state funded approximately 85% of the FRA formula last year statewide. While some districts in our area received upwards of 140% of what they would have been entitled to had the formula been applied, Lindenwald only received 61% of what we would have been entitled to receive if the formula had been applied and the actual distribution of funds. For Lindenwald, the difference between 85% of the formula and 61% of the formula uncapped equates to approximately $9.5 million in additional state funding. To put simple, simply put, it's not fair. We're not asking the state to fully fund the formula. We're asking the state to apply the SFRA formula to the distribution of available funds. In summary, you may be asking what we would do with an additional $9.5 million in state aid. We could provide our students with the right array of instructional supports and extended learning opportunities that they need.
Superintendent, I want to thank you so very, very much. For the record, ma'am, could we have your name, please?
Lori Moore, Superintendent Lindenwald. I have with me my business administrator, Kathleen Hootier, and Board President Kathy Moncrief.
Thank you. Assemblywoman Versacelli?
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, welcome to all of you.
Thank you.
Just a question of curiosity, I'm very supportive of getting money where it has to go. A number of years ago, Lindenwald moved away from the Lower Camden County Regional School District to build its own high school. In hindsight, was that the right move?
Since I was the member of the board at that time, I've served now for over 20 years, the answer is absolutely yes. It was a wonderful opportunity for us to bring our children home, to educate our children locally, and to make our schools a community school, and we've done that. And when we made this move in 2000, we were able to provide the services that our children needed, and up until this budget changed, and up until we did not receive the additional money that, that we need, we were, our educational system was working absolutely very well. But the changes that have occurred, even in addition to the ELL students and everything, have made a grave difference in our situation.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Assemblywoman. In order to get clarity here, what exactly has happened? You've had a significant increase in population?
500 additional students since the budget was fully funded, since the formula was funded. 500 additional students.
And that was since?
And approximately 300 of those are non-English speaking students.
And that's since what period, during what period of time?
Since 2009, which is the one and only year that the formula was funded. So our funding remaining flat has been based on that enrollment number and those demographics. So our demographics has changed, as well as a significant increase in population, yet we received no additional funding.
It's always been my understanding that the 2% cap that was placed by the legislature and the governor, in terms of municipal governments, county governments, as well as schools, was not to take into account radical increases in population, but just keeping causes down as a general rule, assuming that everything was stable. But in fact, in your district, it's not been stable. There's been almost a radical increase in population in terms of people from various communities moving to Lindenwald. Yes?
Correct. And as a result, our taxpayers are overburdened, and we're unable to provide the necessary tax relief. We are under adequacy, and our community is paying more than their local fair share.
What's the average number of children in a classroom, Superintendent?
Our class sizes exceed 30 in many cases.
And according to state guidelines, what should those classes be?
For a high-needs district, class size in lower elementary levels should be between 15 and 18.
So you're over 50%, what you should be.
Yes, and our facilities cannot handle our current enrollment as well. We're leasing an old Catholic school that does not meet ADA specifications, requires bottled water due to lead.
Thank you. Assemblywoman Johnson?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for coming before us today. I have a question regarding, well, first of all, what you're saying is that your student population has increased, but also with that, their needs have, their needs have changed.
Correct.
Requiring more to educate the students because of their, their needs. My question is about the students who are classified, special ed, special needs, that you send out of district?
No, actually, the numbers that we're talking about in the?
No, that's why, do you have any that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we send about approximately 40 students out of district at this time.
Okay. And these contracts are negotiated by, by you and the vendor?
Well, they're, the tuitions are actually set at, you know, by the private schools, and they're certified by the state for the individual, for the, for the annual tax or tuition increases.
So this, when you negotiate this, or when this bill comes in, or when you, when you negotiate this, when you get the invoice, that has to, you have to pay that within that 2% cap?
Yes.
Correct?
Regardless of, yeah, I mean, they could go, we could have kids move in, which we do. Our numbers have fluctuated. We used to, you know, be more around 35, 36 out-of-district students. We're up to 42, 43 as of, you know, now. I mean, and that's, that is common. I mean, that happens in a lot of school districts where students come around.
And two other additional things that have happened in the last few years is the influx of our students that also go to charter schools. We now pay that money. And also, we now pay for Camden County Technical School, where our children attend there, where initially that did not happen. So there are two other additional things on the budget that we haven't had previously.
That equates to about $600,000.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Assemblywoman. Assemblywoman O'Scanlon, please.
Thank you very much for being here. You're one of 600 school districts. You're a particularly extreme example of the fact that we have fiscal pressures across the board. Unfortunately, the reality is, and lots of folks are hiding from it, if, if we don't do something to reform our spending in this state, there won't be more money for your district for 10 more years. You've already been flat-funded for six, which equates to, someone could do the math and compound it regarding inflation, probably a 10% cut. And you've had dramatic increases in, in enrollment and dramatic increases in the needs, which Assemblywoman Johnson just mentioned. There's a lot of legislators in the room. If you, even before we get to more money for schools, we have a $6 to $7 billion deficit in the state budget that will impact us in the next three to five years, that, fully phased in. That includes transportation money. It does include money for, for the pressures such as you're facing. The longer we go, the longer we go ignoring what isn't a, a, an amazing crisis of the future. It's happening right now in the halls of your schools. We need a restructure, and we need honest discussion. It's going to include pension and benefits reform. You're an example of why our sole priority shouldn't be to pass constitutional amendments to force us to make pension payments without corresponding reform. I hope you'll join in calling for that, because that's the only way we're going to be able to solve some of the other school funding issues and the myriad other areas of neglected spending and necessary resources going forward. So I really appreciate you being here and illustrating that.
Respectfully, we aren't really asking for the state to put more money into education. While that would be wonderful, we're really asking to underfund us fairly. If we're going to underfund schools, apply the formula and underfund us fairly, if you can, inequitably. If you can fund 85% of the formula, fund 85% of the formula for everyone.
I fully endorse that. Unfortunately, the, the problem, in order to get there, I've been screaming for that for years, so I'm right, right there with you. It's politics. Trying to cut somewhere, you get, it's, it's apparently insurmountable, or it has been so far. But I'm with you. It should happen. There's no question. It's unfair. As far as adequacy goes, are you, are you?
We are below adequacy.
You're below?
$12 million below adequacy and over our local fair share.
And that, that is a serious problem that I've been working on as well, along with Senator Beck. Senator Sweeney apparently is now coming on board to try to help solve that, I think, our chairman as well. But the handful of schools, there's, there's not a lot of schools that are dramatically under adequacy. That should be where we attack first and transition out, and work with the administration to do that. Unfortunately, the reality that we can't, can't apparently make cuts means you do need additional funds, and that's a problem as well. It's, it's a scary, scary looming crisis that's here now.
One of the, I had the great opportunity, and I appreciate very, very much your time in meeting with me earlier today, along with Assemblywoman Moriarty and Assemblywoman Mascara. One thing, Assemblymen, and I think that all members of this committee are aware, is that because figures are not being updated to reflect increases in, in enrollment in communities like Lindenwald, and conversely, declining enrollments in other communities, we're finding an unfortunate disparity occurring, and that is in some communities, instead of receiving the 100% that they should receive, they're in fact receiving 120 or 130%, while other communities, such as Lindenwald, seem to be experiencing the exact opposite.
61%.
And that is, at 61% of adequacy. So although I appreciate and share with you my own hope and aspiration that this committee will be instrumental in terms of refocusing back on, on how we are spending our money and how we are best allocating it, the funds that we have at our disposal, it seems to me that we have a more immediate, solvable problem that hopefully the Dr. Hesby, David Hesby, the Commissioner of Education, can assist us in, in trying to, at least on the short term, find some way to attack the problem that Lindenwald is encountering and many, many other communities across the state are encountering as well. And that is a disparity that could be easily worked out simply by moving some funds from one area to another within the education budget to reflect either declining enrollment on the one hand, or increased enrollment on the other, take into consideration special needs, as well as foreign language students, et cetera. Assemblywoman Moriarty, you're, I know this issue is very, very dear to you.
I'm sorry, I had to jump up, because I respected Assemblywoman O'Scanlon, but I, I felt like he was suggesting that my constituents from Lindenwald were here asking the state to just print more money. That's far from the case. The case is, if there's going to be shared sacrifice, and they agree, they're not getting 100% school funding, haven't had that since 2009, if it's going to be 85%, let it be 85% across the board. They are bearing the brunt of the sacrifice. They're not sharing the sacrifice. They're being funded at 61%. Neighboring towns that have lost student population are being given 129, 139%. So when you look around, it's just unfair. We need to fix that. If everyone's going to have to sacrifice, let's do it across the board.
So within the available dollars, you're suggesting?
Exactly. They're not asking that we raise more taxes or, or put more money into schools. They understand that we're in shared pain, but they're not sharing it equally.
If I may briefly, Assemblywoman, please.
Very briefly. We are not disagreeing at all, Assemblywoman, and we're going to be right on the same wavelength. And I would?
Assemblyman with your confirmation?
The, absolutely. The problem is, our own colleagues, when it comes time to make the cuts to those that are 129%, I'll, I'll say right here, if there's schools in my district that are, that are at that level, I'll look them in the eye, tell them the truth. Sorry, guys, we have to repurpose this money to take care of kids that may not be in my district, but it's, it's children of New Jersey. So it's, it's awful of, of someone to argue, my kids should get 129%, and your kids should only get 61%. We're in complete agreement. It's been on my list, on my radar, Senator Beck as well. We'll share with you the work we've done. I think the administration would share with us. Unfortunately, we probably have some colleagues that will use their clout to try to thwart such efforts. We have to collectively look at a bipartisan level at them and say, "Sorry, guys, we have to be fair to the children of New Jersey. I'm with you." We have two districts I used to represent, Red Bank and Freehold, fall into the same category. They got kids in, in the halls. They're not my district anymore, but I still continue to advocate for them, because they're children of New Jersey. So I'm with you, and, and look forward to working with them.
I think that we're looking for a response which is not political, but rather deals with hard and fast numbers, and those are irrefutable. Thank you so very much, Superintendent, and your colleagues for being with us today. Next, please, and we're taking a few people out of order because of their own constraints, which we're trying to recognize. Next, please, Kathleen Davis, Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer, Chamber of Commerce of Southern New Jersey. Ms. Davis to be followed by Tony Pergolin from Bancroft. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, Chairman, Chair, Vice Chairman Versacelli, and honorable members of the committee. My name's Kathleen Davis. I'm Executive Vice President and COO for the Chamber of Commerce, Southern New Jersey, and I'm pleased to provide you with our position on Governor Christie's proposed FY 2017 state budget. And overall, our chamber supports the budget, which for the seventh consecutive year restrains spending and contains no new or increased taxes. And having a state government that lives within its means is important to the business community. As is always our position, controlling and reducing spending to offset the need to increase taxes of any kind is a position that we embrace. It is notable that more than three-quarters of the increased spending in this budget is directly attributable to funding public employee pension and health benefits costs. We applaud and supported past reforms enacted by the legislature and the governor, but more needs to be done. In the budget, the governor references reforms that would generate an additional $250 million in savings that can be realized through more changes in public employee health care plan designs, and reforms outlined by the New Jersey Pension and Health Benefit Study Commission's report also deserve serious consideration. As we've done in the past, I'd like to offer a little, a bit of insight into our South Jersey regional economy. And you've heard my president, Deb DiLorenzo, testify as to the impacts competition by out-of-state gaming has had on Atlantic City and the whole South Jersey region. Changes in this major, major industry are just part of the story, and signs of caution still remain on the part of business. I've attached two survey results by the Federal Reserve Bank of Philadelphia, a survey of our member companies, and that shows in the last two quarters of 2015, the most recent results. Employment remains flat. There's modest growth in sales and activity. There's modest growth in sales and activity and tepid employment projections. Also, I wanted to share the results of the survey that we do, conduct of our members every year. And last year, at the end of 2015, our members identified overregulation by federal and state government as tied as the number one issue that they faced, followed by health insurance costs and business taxes. As for the most important issues facing our state, our members ranked the business climate as the number one issue, followed by state budget and state spending, with the third most important issue being the state's taxation structure. And that's why New Jersey's rank, again, at the bottom of the Tax Foundation's Business Tax Climate Index, is something that our policymakers need to consider within the broader conversation of the cost of doing business in our state. New Jersey is home to close to 600,000 small businesses that employ 5.5 million people and generate, generate $179 billion in payroll. New Jersey's ranking, a second to the last, on the Small Business and Entrepreneurship Council's recent tax index is of great concern. Technological advances are making location less important and giving businesses more mobility. And we know that businesses, the threat of businesses leaving the state for more tax and operationally friendly environment is real. We commend the governor for once again presenting a solid budget that does not increase taxes or fees, and that's important to job creators who are facing increasing uncertainty caused by looming legislation that will increase the cost of doing business. Thank you for your attention.
Ms. Davis, thank you for your presence here as you are here every year. And thank you for your message in terms of the specific and particular needs of South Jersey. They're most appreciated and, and helpful to us. Quick question, if I may. You mentioned living within, within our budget, which is something that we all strive to do. Certainly, we're all too aware of New Jersey's tax structure and the difficulties faced by businesses as well as by individuals. But I did want to get clarity, because the state borrows, or has borrowed over the past six years, net-net, $1 billion per year. Our current debt excluding pension is in the neighborhood of $35 to $40 billion and is $6 billion higher than it was just six years ago. Do you have any comment in terms of the utilization of debt, which seems to be, to some of us, a way to obfuscate not increasing taxes by increasing debt?
Well, I guess it depends, and, and we don't have a formal position on here, but I guess it depends on what the debt is for. For example, going into debt to buy a home is something that is-
How about going into debt to pay your daily expenses?
I am not aware of the, I would have to look at the particulars on that, as to where the state budget does that.
I'd commend you to do that. It would be very, very helpful, I know, to me and I believe to my colleagues as well, to better understand, because it is a matter of personal frustration. It seems like we're avoiding increasing taxes and instead doing it in debt so that the sins of the fathers will pass, and mothers will pass along to the children and grandchildren. My granddaughters right now look like they're going to be dealing the brunt of that kind of debt in New Jersey. Any questions, please, from Ms. Davis? Assemblyman O'Scanlon?
Thank you very much for being here. And I appreciate the work of the South Jersey Chamber. You guys are one of the preeminent entities in, in the state, who really looks at the budget, comes up with genuine ideas, and a cogent analysis and comprehensive analysis. Really appreciate that hard work. Just real quick regarding debt, you guys take a look at the budget on a regular basis, probably better than some legislators do. Present company, completely excluded. Have you seen that we're borrowing money to pay expenses somewhere?
I have not.
I think you guys, you guys, I think you'd know. I think it'd be a big red flag. I haven't seen any evidence of that. I think the last time there was proof of that, I think it was the McGreevy administration. I think they were sued by Leonard Lance, I think, at the time. So that's highly illegal at this point. So hopefully that's not happening. I don't believe it is with this administration. And I should note that our rate of increase in debt under the Christie administration is down dramatically. It's an average of around 3% or less during the course of this past six years. In the previous eight years, it was closer to 12% debt accrual rate. So I, I think this administration, love them or hate them, should be commended for that dramatic reduction in our debt accrual. Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you, Assemblyman. Just to be clear with the numbers, in 2014, our aggregate bonded obligations were 41 billion, 835,000, 200, 41, I'm sorry? 41.8 billion. And a year later, we're at 40, was at 43.234 billion. We'd welcome, we'd welcome your analysis because-
I will be happy to follow up with the committee with that.
Thank you. That would be lovely of you. Thank you so much, Ms. Davis. If there are no other questions? Next, please, Tony, Tony Pergolin from Bancroft. Ms. Pergolin will be followed by Joyce Campbell from Catholic Charities, Diocese of Trenton. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. My name is Tony Pergolin. I'm President and CEO of Bancroft, and I'd first like to support and acknowledge Kathy Davis's testimony, as I'm pleased to sit on the Board of the Chamber of Commerce and support their testimony as well. This morning, I'm here to talk about Bancroft. I am the President and CEO of Bancroft, and many of you know Bancroft is an organization that has been a part of Camden County since 1883. Today, we've grown to become the fifth-largest employer in the county. We currently have about 2,500 employees, based mostly in Camden County. We have operations in Burlington, Gloucester, Salem, Ocean, and Middlesex Counties as well. Bancroft serves children and adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities such as autism, and we provide neurorehabilitation services for those with brain injuries and other neurological conditions. We are one of the largest providers of services of the state of New Jersey. With more than 700 licensed beds in the state, we're at full capacity, and we have a long waiting list. And we have 300 children in our school systems who come from every county in the state of New Jersey. We were pleased to see the governor's budget with respect to $554 million for the Children's System of Care at the Division of Children, DCF. This program funds our pediatric programs. We believe these new funds will allow more services, more children to receive much-needed services. We were eagerly pleased to see the additional dollars for the Division of Developmental Disabilities, particularly the inclusion of $10 million for providers to make infrastructure improvements. I would respectfully urge you to support these provisions in your budget, as well to ensure that these funds can be applied to multiple uses, including technology needs. While we definitely need capital improvements for many of our group homes and our facilities, we additionally need them for the ever, ever, the, the needs for the ever-changing and unprecedented changes that are occurring right now as the Department of Developmental Disability implements a fee-for-service system. It's causing us to need much more advanced technology. And along with bringing more technology into the organization, we also need a whole different skill level in the, in the workforce that currently doesn't exist today. We're also being asked to do things that we never had to do before, like manage the rep payee for the people that we serve, and, and now become the collection agencies for some of the social security payments. Again, these are, we understand the need to be able to do them, we just don't have the capacity to do it today, and the infrastructure money would certainly help that. It is our position, however, that the allocations and increases in the DDD do not go far enough, and I wanted to spend a few minutes on some of my concerns. As a CEO and also as a former CFO for hospitals in the region, it's unnerving to me to be planning for our fiscal 2017 budget these days in the absence of the rates for the services for the coming year that coincides with the state's fiscal year. We trust that DDD will provide those answers to make us appropriate adjustments, but again, I could use your support. The other, and probably most significant, is that Bancroft and other providers in our industry have not received a cost-of-living adjustment in eight years. That's been eight years that we've done our best to give what, whatever increase we can, but quite honestly, is insignificant in to, to relate to these, the, the work that these individuals do, the hard and dedicated work that they do, and also for them to live a quality life. It's been eight years. We've, we've been trying our best to keep up with the ever-significant increasing healthcare costs. Last year alone, we experienced a 21% increase in our healthcare costs over prior year. And this year, we were forced to be able to push some of those costs onto our employees. So not only are they not receiving it, but they are also now taking that into consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very, very much for your testimony. Bancroft is so well-known throughout the state for its tremendous work and efforts, and we appreciate those very much. Assemblyman Singleton?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman. Tony, a quick question. You talked about the, the cost-of-living adjustment and the wages of your staff there. What is the average wage of the individuals we're talking about?
Our starting salary is $11.65, and that is something that we've been consciously increasing over the past year by 50 cents.
Okay. And my second question, as you were, as I was perusing your testimony, as you were talking about, you, you talked through there about some of the additional allocations and such that you would hope that DDD would look to providers to give more resources to. If, if Bancroft is not filling this void, filling this gap, where are the individuals who you service? Where do they, where do they go in the grand scheme of things?
They are home with their mom and dad, in family situations that are not living, living a life that they can live. I mean, we hear from parents all the time saying, please help us. And we're, we're trying to, because we, they don't have the funds to be able to be placed in a base, in a place like Bancroft. So what we're trying to do is, is allow our staff to provide in-home services for these individuals, so that at least there's some support. But it's not anywhere near what, what these families need, and, and especially as you can imagine, as parents grow older and older, it's becoming more and more difficult for them to really give their, their child the life that, that they, that they really can handle.
And if they're not in facilities like Bancroft, and sometimes individuals have to go to hospitals for, for different pieces, the, the cost for your clients that you service, the patients you service, to be in a hospital setting or another setting, is that a higher cost or lower cost?
It's absolutely a higher cost. Absolutely. They're in the emergency rooms, they're in crisis centers. And again, it's another great example of, we're reaching out to hospitals now, saying, let us, let our, put our staff in there to kind of help them be, be able to work with the, the child or the adult, so that they can be discharged at a much quicker rate. And, and hospitals are really looking for our services, because they're in hospitals when, when they really shouldn't be, at a much higher rate.
So, and, and thank you, Chairman, for the light, too. My, my final question, so, investment in this space actually, over, over time, saves the state money?
Absolutely. And we have, we, we have a lot of data to prove it.
Thank, could, would you mind having your, your team share that data with, with members of the committee? I think it would be eye-opening for those of us who aren't aware of the fine work that Bancroft and other providers do in this space. So thank you.
Thank you. We'd be happy to.
Thank you, Assemblyman. Assemblywoman Rodriguez-Gregg, please.
Thank you.
That is on, ma'am.
Thank you, sorry.
If I could just ask the, if you bring the mic a little bit closer, just so that we can, thank you so much.
Sure. Thank you. Well, first of all, thank you, Assemblyman Singleton. You've asked some of my questions already. The other, I have a few other questions. First of all, thank you for what you do. You certainly feel, feel a great need in our state. What is the, the popu, do you know the population throughout the state of organizations such as yourself that you serve?
There, there's quite a few. I mean, there's, I would say, on average, we, we think there's about 150 organizations in the, in the, in the state. They're varying sizes, and they do various, Bancroft has educational, they also have residential, and they also have vocational. And some other organizations have some of them, but not all. So it's a, it's a very disparate system throughout the state.
Population in the state?
At Bancroft, it's 75% of our population, so I would imagine it's pretty high. I don't know that statistic.
Okay. What are your, you know, you obviously rely on state funding. What are other funding sources for your organization?
We, we, we do heavily rely on state funding. Our education programs are funded by school districts. We have 120 school districts that fund us. And for our neuro rehab services, we, we are funded by insurance. So the workers comp, or, you know, some of the medical, those kind.
So how much, when it comes to funding, how much is state aid? How much is-
45% is state.
And how much-
30% is school district, and the rest of it is insurance-based.
Okay. How heavily do you rely on Medicaid funding as well?
We rely heavily on, on Medicaid.
And what would you say about the reimbursement rates?
They're, they, they don't cover the cost.
Mm-hmm. And you also rely on, of course, these sources to pay your employees, correct?
Yes.
Is, now, I believe with, with Medicaid, there's, they, they reimburse a certain amount for direct support, you know, the professionals?
They, they do. And, you know, let, let me just give you an overall, we, we have $140 million budget, and 90%, 90% of our funding goes directly to our direct care, between pay and benefits. So predominantly, most of our funding goes right to our direct care, overall.
Sure. So would you say, because it's been pretty much your state funding, everything has been low reimbursement rates, and I believe with health insurance as well, the reimbursement rates are not?
Right.
Yeah. So would you say, you know, employees' wages have been held pretty flat?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely. And, and they're, they're, like I said, without a cost-of-living adjustment, it, what, what it's doing is causing our very dedicated staff to find other type of jobs, so that they can put together, you know, different types of wages to be able to provide a, a living for their family. That hurts us, too.
From what I understand, you know, I believe everybody should have a, a living wage, but from what I understand, an increase, there is a movement in the state to pay $15 as a minimum wage. How would that affect you, considering your funding resources?
So if we got funding to do that, it would be an amazing change to, to our organization and to our, our staff across the board. Amazing. My, my, my scare is, is that, that that will go to $15 and we won't get one more dollar for it. That will cause us to shrink our organization dramatically. I mean, we will never be able to provide the, to the support for the number of people we serve today if we have to pay the, the, the new, the $15 minimum wage without any additional funding.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblywoman. Assemblyman Johnson, please.
Thank you, Chair. Madam President, you mentioned in your, in your testimony, infrastructure money?
Yes.
To, to fund the fee-for-service, the change to fee-for-service. And you said there's a skill sets that, that has to be changed. I didn't, can you explain that to me, the skill set that's changed because of fee-for-service? And number two, I put two in, two questions at the same time. As you switch over to fee-for-service, the impact of that on your cash flow when it comes to collecting funds? Because you didn't, I didn't hear you mention that in your testimony.
Yes. So we, we agreed to be the pilot with the fee-for-service program a few years back now, which, which we were happy to do, and, and I felt that the state worked with us pretty closely to help us transition. And, and I'll start with the first, with the second question on cash flow. So we had always been prepaid for the services, and now, and never had a bill. We never had to do any of that. It was a contracted rate, and we got a 12th of it over the year. With the fee-for-service, we now have to bill. So that requires more technology. It requires more staff. It requires staff in our programs to make sure that we're getting the right input, the correct input. And then, and, and now we get paid 45 days after the, the service is provided, rather than pre. So that was a huge impact on cash flow. And we've done a lot of work internally to kind of keep that moving. So it was difficult in the beginning, and, and I feel like, that, that we've got that pretty much under control. When, when I think about infrastructure, I mean, we have 200 group homes and apartments. I mean, there's a lot of infrastructure capital needs across the board there all the time. And, and as much as we try to stay ahead of it, so that we're not in, you know, crisis mode and, and paying things urgently, that's difficult because of our cash flow. But, but more important to me is, as organizations like Bancroft grow, to serve more and more people, and we are, we need to be able to put more structure into our organization. So more HR, more finance, more IT. And, and we've, we've, you know, implemented a lot of technology over the years, and, and I felt like that we had to, but it's a whole different skill set for people to get data out of there, understand what the data is, and it's just changing the dynamic of the whole entire organization. It's hard to keep up.
Okay. I understand now. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Assemblyman. If there are no other questions? Thank you so much for being here, Ms. Pergolin.
Thank you.
understand what the data is, and it's just changing the dynamic of the whole entire organization. It's hard to keep up.
Okay. I understand now. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Assemblyman. If there are no other questions? Thank you so much for being here, Ms. Pergolin.
Thank you.
Next, please, Joyce Campbell. Ms. Campbell to be followed by Dan Keating. Mr. Keating is with the Alliance for Betterment of Citizens with Disabilities. Ms. Campbell?
Good morning, Committee members. Thank you so much for hearing the testimony of Catholic Charities, Diocese of Trenton, again, this year. We've been serving the state for over 100 years, assisting those impacted by trauma and adversity, helping them to renew their lives, but most importantly, to restore their hope. Our new tagline, "Hope starts here." I wanted to share with you the view that we have of the fiscal year state budget, the proposed budget. We certainly applaud the dedication of funding to mental health and substance abuse services and the integration with primary health care services, which we have seen as being a big difference. These investments will definitely help us provide compassionate, quality care. However, we need to make sure that this money stays in the budget. And I think that while we're dealing in the mental health system, many of the concerns that were just brought to you are similar concerns we have with transitioning to a fee-for-service system. Without having gotten any cost-of-living increases for many years, you know, it's been kind of a crumbling system. So, these really are needed investments to really serve those with mental health and addiction issues. And we would just ask that, you know, we're committed to making the fee-for-service transition work so that we need your support as well in doing that. Secondly, we really see a shredding safety net for the most vulnerable in our state. We ask for support for state policies that would assist those living in poverty, the disabled, and victims of domestic violence. As Vice President of the Anti-Poverty Network of New Jersey, I can say that we have been very encouraged by Speaker Prieto and Senate President Sweeney's recent efforts to introduce and pass a package of bills that would address these needs. I know many of you on this committee have supported those. I've listed several things to call your attention to, but what I really wanted to highlight out of those is the housing concerns. Over the 20 years I've been at Catholic charities, without a doubt, across all of our services, and we serve almost 100,000 people a year, the ability to afford housing and to have housing in a safe environment has been our number-one issue. So, I call really to your attention, the State Rental Assistance Program. I was there when that was passed. I testified for that. That program has really provided less and less services over the years, and we'd really ask that it return at least to the fiscal year 11 levels and not have money taken from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for it. Social Services to the Homeless is a flat-funded program. Flat funding is less funding. One of the things I wanted to just briefly call your attention to is Governor Christie, in his budget address, talked about the decrease in homelessness. And he's correct in that specific number he talked about, but that number reflects a very, very narrow federal definition of homelessness, leaving out about 12 categories of people that we see that are basically homeless. We've had recent changes with the Emergency Assistance Program that have left people homeless. I know we have shelters across the state that are closing and that are losing money. And our homelessness has not gone down anywheres to the degree that we should be closing any shelters. Lastly, I'm really going to ask if the $2.4 million that was in the last two budgets for domestic violence and sexual assault services be included once again? I know the additional funding in the last two years allowed our Providence House Domestic Violence Services to maintain staffing levels and provide a very small overdue increase to some staff. You know, this funding supports life-saving services, keeping women and children out of danger. It keeps them alive. So, it kind of really behooves me why, for our third year, we have to really ask for this. So, I have to say that's the thing that I'm most passionate about and really hope that you can go ahead again and put that back in the budget. We certainly, at Catholic charities, remain available as a resource to ensure that this budget is adjusted and compassionate budget. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. We were collectively, a number of us disappointed that the governor did not automatically include that $2.4 million in his proposed budget, and the numbers will be making every effort to get it back in this year. Any questions from members of the committee? Seeing none, thank you so much. Thank you for staying as close to the time as you did and for your written testimony. Next up is Dan Keating, Executive Director, Alliance for Betterment of Citizens with Disabilities. Welcome, Dan. And to follow Dan will be Liz Kirshenbaum, Executive Director of CASA. So, Liz, you're up next. Dan, welcome, and you have four minutes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the committee. I submitted written remarks. I'm going to deviate a little bit from them. I appreciate the testimony earlier of Ms. Pergolin. Bancroft is a member of the ABCDD Alliance. There is information to the Assemblywoman's question about how many people are in, how many programs there are in the state. There are about 150, and you'll see a number of those that we represent. I also want to ask the legislature, the Assembly, to keep the funding that the governor has put in. It is generous relative to serving more people. More people will have the opportunity to live in the community, and the $10 million, while, will result in a 1%, we understand, a 1% increase to the budgets on a one-time basis, which is very much appreciated, and it will help go towards some of that infrastructure that we talked about. I want to focus, most of my comments today, on the workforce crisis. We are having a hard time maintaining, recruiting, retaining, hiring and retaining staff. It is a statewide problem in every county, all of our providers. Ms. Pergolin indicated that their starting salary is north of $11. The average starting salary for direct support professionals in the state is $10. And many of our programs have not had an increase in the past eight or nine years, or if it is, it's at the expense of other things, or on their backs for fundraising and whatnot, which becomes more and more difficult. As the unemployment rate goes down, and that's a great thing for the state, one of the issues is that it's harder and harder to get people to take the jobs that are necessary to maintain quality supports and services for people in programs, for people with intellectual developmental disabilities. One of the issues that was raised earlier relative to families, and where do people go? If families have to stay home and care for their adult child with intellectual developmental disabilities, they cannot work. And so, it takes taxpayers out of the system because families are unable to, you know, to go to work and generate income for their family, and it's an additional burden. Along those lines, excuse me, also, many of the people that work for our providers hold more than one job or are under the poverty level, and they are receiving supports from the state in the way of food stamps or housing subsidies or Medicaid. Medicaid is an issue. I'm sorry, I may be jumping around a little bit, but I'm just trying to cover some of those concerns. Medicaid, one of the difficulties is, we can't raise the rates, okay? And so, I draw your attention in my written testimony to two issues. One is President Obama is intent on signing an executive order within the next three to six months, which would raise an overtime exemption. Right now, if people make over $28,000, they are exempt from overtime. If it goes to $50,000, as is the original proposal, you can only imagine that if one individual needs to be, increase their salary from $28,000 to $50,000, that's a significant issue. The provider is going to be forced to either pay the overtime, which in some cases is exorbitant relative to the fact that we're providing 24 hours of care and for three shifts.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Keating. Questions, please? Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, Assemblywoman.
Can you continue to explain how this overtime exemption is going to affect your providers?
Yes. Many providers have staff who are service managers. They may be a residential manager. They're responsible for the operation of a group home over three shifts, 24 hours. If Assemblyman Scher was a direct support professional and he had to call out sick, well, we may have to call in Assemblyman Scanlon to take his place.
I don't get sick, Dan.
Okay.
But there would be an upgraded services, just so...
Yeah. Right. Okay. Yeah. Okay. I'm not going there. But essentially, what would happen is, we have to pay the overtime, okay? If I can't get Assemblywoman Scanlon to come in and not have to pay overtime, I may have to go into the schedule because we have to provide the staffing and the number of people to continue to maintain that support. So, if I go into the schedule, I don't get overtime because I'm the manager. I make maybe about $30,000. If we have to raise, and some programs, Ms. Pergolin said, told you the number of group homes she has, you know, overtime is a significant issue for providers. If we have to now pay $50,000, which is now what they're talking about, the exemption, providers have to do, you know, an analysis of whether they want to pay the overtime, which could be costly, or raise everyone to $50,000. So, some of my providers, and we're advocating on the federal level to talk to Department of Labor about the effect, because Department of Labor evidently hasn't talked to the Department of Human Services at the federal level, thinking, "Well, that's their problem." Well, their problem is just a problem we all have right now. There's not enough money, okay? So, if we... But one of my providers, a larger provider, has estimated that it could be up to $250,000 hit to their budget with no income coming in, okay? Or they may have to let go 25 people, and if those 25 positions happen to be direct support professionals, which is the bulk of the number of people who are working for these programs, that's a significant loss to the quality of the program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there are no other questions for Mr. Keating? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Before calling up the next speaker, we do have the great pleasure of having Assemblywoman Pamela Lampit here. Assemblywoman, if you'd like to address... Thank you so much for being here today, ma'am.
Yes. Good morning, everybody. I'm Assemblywoman Pam Lampit, representing the 6th District, which is here in Collingswood. So, we want to welcome government here into our great city. I know that you heard earlier from the mayor of the town, Assemblywoman Malley, welcoming you, and I just believe that this is a wonderful process to bring government to the people. I know that the issues here in South Jersey are not unique to New Jersey, but it's great to be able to have the opportunity, to have the representation, be able to have access to everybody here. So, Chairman Scher, appreciate the due diligence that you have served on the Budget Committee and to each and every one of the members. And for people sitting behind me, to really understand the complexity of the budget and to really understand the dedication that these individuals have towards overseeing the budget and the budget process is really one of which dedication and commitment, I would have to say, really represents each and every one of you on a bipartisan sort of basis. So, from myself and my fellow colleagues, to the people behind all of us, behind me, thank you very much for your due diligence and appreciate all the efforts that you make towards making New Jersey a better place for all of us to live, work, and thrive. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Assemblywoman. Next, please, Liza Kirshenbaum, Executive Director, Court Appointed Special Advocates of New Jersey, to be followed by Daniel Steinmetz. Ms. Kirshenbaum.
Good morning. Thank you for this chance to testify on behalf of CASA, Court Appointed Special Advocates, and for your support over the past 13 years. We're here because we need your help again this year to restore CASA state funding to its FY15 and 16 levels. Despite a $7 million increase in DCF, the proposed...
I'm going to interrupt you and hold your time. Appreciating the placards, if we could ask you either to stand behind the audience or to sit down. I don't want to be disrespectful to those individuals who might be sitting behind you and can't see. I mean no disrespect.
Our apologies.
Not at all, ma'am.
Well, it was a good show, and the work was well worth it. That's impressive. So, we saw it, and...
Ms. Kirshenbaum.
Thank you. Despite a $7 million increase in DCF, the proposed budget cuts CASA funding back yet again by $850,000, sending us back to the FY08 level and undoing so much of the progress that we've made since then. CASA has long been recognized as a model public-private partnership. We are the only entity authorized by state statute to help the court and child welfare systems ensure the safety and well-being of abused and neglected kids in placement. We make sure that our judges have the information they need to make well-informed decisions about these children and get them into safe, permanent homes as quickly and with as few moves as possible. We perform what we believe is a critical state function and provide a consistent, caring person in a child's life. If any of you don't already know about us, take a look at the written testimony. It's all in there. As you can see at Tab 1, the $2 million appropriation in FY15 helped CASA advocate for nearly 400 additional children. Then in FY16, you restored that $2 million appropriation, guaranteeing that those children and an additional 250 on top of them continued to benefit from CASA advocacy. This restoration also enabled us to start meeting the requirements of new state standards without diverting resources away from serving kids. If the FY17 state funding is cut, we will lose these gains. Many, if not most, of the 650 additional children that we're serving will need to be cut from the program, losing their CASA volunteer, and this would be yet another terrible trauma for them. At the same time, the state would lose the significant financial benefits that come with CASA service. As you know, CASA advocacy provides an opportunity for federal drawdown. It also saves the state millions in the cost of placing these children. The document at Tab 2 describes how CASA advocacy helped save the state nearly $7 million in FY15 in the cost of placement alone. And the document at Tab 4 shows how we leverage state funding. But saving money is really just a byproduct of what our incredible CASAs do, and I'm honored to share my time today with Jerry Magreeney from Mercer County CASA, who changed his CASA child's life.
Thank you. I became Melody's CASA when she was 11. She'd been removed from a hotel where there was gang violence and drug use. She was abandoned for days and eating dog food. Her mother had threatened to kill her. So, not surprisingly, she had some serious behavioral issues and even threatened suicide at the age of 10. Moved from her second foster home, her caseworker asked that a CASA be appointed, and I was. I did what needed to be done. I gave her a sense of comfort, consistency, and calm that she'd been lacking. I helped her cope with her feelings and control her behaviors, and I was rewarded by getting to see who she really was or who she could be. She was a survivor, and she had grit. But mostly, I listened to how much she wanted to live with her grandmother, and I helped facilitate open communications. And that was really the key that unlocked the possibility of her actually being adopted. There were lots of challenges in getting Melody to finally be adopted by her grandmother. I arranged for and helped facilitate meetings between her grandmother and child welfare, addressed her grandmother's needs and concerns and fears, and advocated strongly for the agency to meet her grandmother's needs.
I'm going to interrupt you for just a moment.
Sure.
We did not set back the clock, and we should have, for your testimony. So, I'm going to ask you to take another minute or so to wrap up your testimony.
Sure. I'll have a few more seconds. So, for a child her age and her track record, the cards are really stacked against her. But we didn't give up. Her grandmother didn't give up, and the advocacy really paid off. She was adopted before she turned 14, and she's a totally different kid now, happy, enthusiastic, and full of life. And I'm certain that this adoption wouldn't have happened but for the help of CASA.
If you look in your packet, you'll see at Tab 3 Jerry's story and the story of five other CASA volunteers, the totality of which, six stories saved the state 3.5, actually over $3.5 million in just the cost of placement alone based on budget figures. It's critical that this advocacy continue. It's critical, therefore, that the $2 million appropriation from FY16 and 15 be restored in the state budget. We're hoping, as you did last year, that this committee will help us yet again restore. We're not asking for more, we're asking for the same. Thank you.
Thank you both for your testimony. Last year, and perhaps in the past as well, I don't remember, you'll forgive me, but I know last year, there was a bipartisan resolution adopted to put the money back into CASA. Why the administration took it out again is beyond me, but I just had the pleasure to be speaking briefly with the Republican Budget Chair, who informs me that he would welcome joining with me in terms of sponsoring such a resolution to put back those funds into CASA.
We're extremely grateful for that. Thank you.
It isn't done, but...
We're grateful for the effort.
We want to caution you that the governor can red-line it out, but, you know, it does have bipartisan support. Thank you. I know the questions. Thank you both. Next, please, Daniel Steinmetz, to be followed by Vanessa Serang, I believe it is.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Assembly. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this morning. I'm here to speak on behalf of the non-public schools in this state who are having a terrible time... who are having a terrible time regarding transportation. The state aid in lieu of transportation amount has been frozen at eight-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars since 2008, in spite of a statute which calls for annual increases. I got interested in this problem because last August, my granddaughters who attend our Lady of Hope School in Gloucester Township, their parents received notice early in August that the school board had been unable to find a busing company willing to bid on a contract to bus the students, and that they should assume there would be no busing in the coming year. This caused a tremendous problem at the school, consternation, great stress. Finally, early in September, the school, on its own, was able to find a contract with a busing company, but not at eight-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars a head. The school had to put in some of its own money to get the contract. We've got another year coming up. I'm trying to see whether this was just a localized thing or not, I've checked with quite a few other schools, and uniformly, these Catholic schools, I call it, one high school and several elementary schools, they have the same problem, one year they have busing, the next year they don't. The busing companies do not want to bid on these contracts because it's only eight-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars a head. It's a terrible problem. There's a kind of a chaotic situation throughout the state, it's not just down here. It's just an on-again, off-again problem. Now, these Catholic schools perform a valuable function in the state of New Jersey. They do a good job educating students. They save the state one-point-two-billion dollars a year in what would otherwise have to be spent if these children were in public school. Add to that the many other non-Catholic, non-public schools, Jewish and other Christian schools, and you have a huge tax saving. The aid in lieu of transportation is a very wise investment on the part of the estate, by the state. It keeps these children in the Catholic schools so they don't have to be educated in the public schools. The Catholic schools throughout this state are quite financially stressed at this time. If they lose their busing, two things happen. They lose students, because some parents have to have the busing. They also lose prospective students, who are people who are contemplating putting children in kindergarten or out preschool. Then when they find out that there's no busing, they decide against it, put the kids in public school. We never even know about those people. So, what I'm trying to say is, the critical stress that the Catholic schools are under in this state is so severe, that if this issue isn't straightened out, this could be the last straw in the closing of many of these Catholic schools. Now, none of this was supposed to be happening. Years ago, by law, we have eighteen, New Jersey statute eighteen-eight, thirty-nine-dash-one-A, which was supposed to settle this problem by providing for a formula for annual increase in the aid to, for public, for non-public transportation. That has not been followed since 2008, and there's just no good reason for it. We shouldn't even be here today to talk about this. Now, I've done an analysis based on that statute, and figured out that if the statute had been followed, this year, the proper allotment for non-public school transportation would be nine-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. I respectfully ask that that be included in the budget. The amount of money involved here is a very, very small thing compared to the other numbers we're talking about for other programs. This problem could be solved with a small amount of money and save the taxpayers of New Jersey a huge amount of money by not having to take these students into the public schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Question from Assemblyman Johnson. What was that statute again, sir?
It's NJSA eighteen-A, colon, thirty-nine-dash-one-A. That should have solved the problem, but because it hasn't been honored by the legislature for eight years, we're just in a real mess throughout the whole non-public school system in this state.
And the number you have is nine-eighty-four sixty-eight?
I have nine-eighty-five sixty-eight.
Eighty-five sixty-eight?
Yeah, that would be the amount that would be required under the terms of the statute.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next, we're calling on Vanessa, oh, I'm sorry, we had another question, I'm sorry. Who is Maria?
Thank you.
Daniel, welcome back.
Thank you.
Just ignoring us over here. Let's see, so, you know, just a couple of questions. First, it's my understanding that parents, by state law, parents aren't allowed to pick up the additional tab when it comes to trying to add additional bus routes. I know personally in my district, we have one school, St. Mary's, where there are, the travel time, because of the busing contract, they have to, you know, they're, they're, they're very narrow in the routes that they can do, and it's about a two-hour commute to the school and back from students that are coming from other areas. So, what would the impact be, and I think you may have touched on this, but I just want you to reiterate, what would the impact be if some of these schools, you know, had a decline in population or had to close because they had a decline in student enrollment?
Well, when a school's enrollment falls to a certain point, the school has to close. Now, I, I'm in a parish where we had a school, St. Stephen's School in Pensulcan, where when they had around two-hundred students in the school, that was okay. The enrollment fell to a hundred-and-fifty, and they had to close. They just couldn't, couldn't get along on a hundred-and-fifty. Now, to your question about whether anyone can add to the eight-eighty-four, the school board cannot. By law, the school board, which normally arranges these contracts, is required to limit itself to eight-eighty-four a head, and that's it. Now, what happened in, with my granddaughter's school is that the school, on its own, made a direct contract with a busing company, between the busing company and the school, and the school had to put in some of its own money to make that contract happen. So, I get your point, if the, at the current situation, if the, if the local school board is unable to find a contract for the Catholic school at eight-eighty-four, that's the end of the story. They just tell the school, sorry, no busing this year. And that's the way the system works.
Thank you.
Right, did anyone else? Thank, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Vanessa Serano, for the Freedom Prep School. Originally, it was supposed to be Ron Brady, Ron is not here, I take it. Vanessa, you're here? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, please, welcome, be comfortable, you have four minutes.
My name's Vanessa Serano, and I'm with Camden Community Charter School. And I have two kids in the school.
Yes, I'm sorry, who are you with, because we had a Freedom Charter, who, what Charter?
Camden Community Charter School.
Camden Community Charter School, okay, thank you.
And I have two kids on there, and I have a seventh grader, and he's got there two years ago from being bullied in a public school. And since he got in this community charter school, he blossomed into a young man, respectful, reading more, interacting with more kids, having friends. And with my daughter, they've been helping. And Camden Community Charter School showed me a lot of different things that the school before my kids were in, that was public. They actually didn't know half of the things that my kids, you know, was happening. And since they've been in there, I could say I learned a lot from them, and I would like their school to actually keep getting funded and keep going.
Okay. That's very good, very good. Thank you. Any else from the committee? And how old, how old is your family, remember?
I have a thirteen, a thirteen-year-old that's in seventh grade, and my little one that's eight years old, in second grade.
Well, we're very happy to hear that they're doing well in the school, thank you. Gordon? So, you're saying that in comparison with what your kids have learned, where they are academically, versus the, their friends, their peers, in public, in the public school system, your son and daughter are way ahead of them?
Yes. Way ahead of them, and he's learning stuff that he should be already in high school on. Like, he's getting already high school homework, that he's loving it, and he's coming home more interested and more, like, Mom, come see this, let's do this together. Like, he never did that in a public school.
Okay.
He was scared to tell me half of the things that were happening, because of other incidents. But, since he's there, he's opened up more, he's respectful, teachers love him, they want to clone him.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Judy Savage, New Jersey Council of County Vocational School Districts. Welcome, Judy. And following Judy will be Sean Miles. Judy, welcome, you have four minutes.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Assemblymen and members of the Budget Committee, it's a great honor to speak to you today. Last year was a really positive one for New Jersey's county vocational technical schools, largely thanks to all of you and your support for the Career and Technical Education Bill Package that was led by Speaker Prieto. The legislation strengthened New Jersey's focus on career readiness, and it took some initial steps toward expanding career and technical education programs in the state. Small grants in the last two budgets incentivized the creation of seven new career and technical programs in high-demand industries this year, and six more new programs will be launched in September. As a result, students are experiencing new opportunities in advanced manufacturing, computer science, STEM, law and public safety, culinary arts, and other areas. Every one of these programs is a partnership with employers, with colleges, and even with local school districts. And restoration of funding for adult high schools and adult career training programs at county vocational schools in the current year is helping more adults take advantage of low-cost programs that prepare them for employment. We hope this funding can be continued in the next budget. A summary of all the first-year results from this legislation is attached to my testimony. Our county vocational schools are extremely grateful to the legislature for this support. Nevertheless, like the earlier speakers, I need to express concern about the impact of stagnant state aid on vocational schools and all school districts. We appreciate the slight bump in funding for this year, but the reality is that minimal increases in school aid, while costs continue to rise, amounts to an overall reduction in resources for school districts. The school aid formula was run this year, but schools entitled to an increase were allocated only three-and-a-half percent of the growth they were entitled to under the formula, plus an additional ten dollars per student. So, I'm not saying a three-and-a-half percent increase, I'm saying an increase that was three-and-a-half percent of the increase that the formula would call for. This still doesn't make up some of those deep cuts that took place in 2011. Among the twenty-one county vocational schools, seventeen are slated to receive less aid next year than they got seven years ago, despite the fact that county vocational schools as a group have experienced twelve percent enrollment growth over those seven years. At the same time, vocational schools suffer from limited funding at the county level. Unlike local school districts, which are, can increase their levy up to the two percent cap, county vocational schools don't have taxing authority. Their funding is determined by freeholders, who are themselves feeling the pinch of rising costs and their own tax levy cap. Adult education remains a critically important need for the state, and unfortunately, the governor's proposed budget eliminated the four-million dollars that the legislature allocated for this important need in 2016. We respectfully request that you maintain the funding at last year's level. Our state must provide a safety net for students who don't succeed in a traditional academic setting. High school completion and career training programs provide vital pathways to success for young adults and others who are struggling to support themselves and their families. With continued state support, counties hope to restore adult programs that were cut or eliminated as a result of the funding cuts of the past seven years. Sustainable funding would allow counties to increase the number of seats for adult high schools and expand post-secondary vocational programs. So, thank you very much for your strong support in the past, and we hope that the legislature can maintain these investments.
Judy, what happens if the legislature is not successful in reincorporating some degree of money for adult education?
The programs are going to continue to wither. I mean, adult high school programs, which I spoke about in the past, they have largely dried up.
And how many adults participate in these programs presently, what is the population?
Among both adult high school and the adult training, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of five-thousand students, we're trying to get those numbers for the current year.
So, if the governor's four-million-dollar cut is sustained and is not reversed, how many seats will be taken away?
I can't answer that, I don't, I don't know.
If you can get that to us at some point, it would be helpful. Thank you. Any questions from members of the committee? Seeing none, thank you, Judy, very much.
Thank you.
Pleased to call on Sean Miles, Sean, are you here? Please come forward. Following Sean will be Ethan Hasbrook, of the American Cancer Society. Sean, welcome.
How you doing?
Real good, thank you. And now, I had the person in this slot was the Learning Community Charter School.
Yes, I was Freedom Prep.
And so, you're now Freedom Prep?
Yeah, well, Freedom Prep, I had-
Very good, well, welcome.
Yeah, I had two kids in Freedom Prep, an eighth grader and a third grader. One, the eighth grader, she used to go to Cooper's Point, she graduated from Cooper's Point with the Freedom Prep, and she's doing well, she's an honest student, she loves it, because, plus, they're preparing them for college, you know? They take trips, you know, to different colleges, to get them prepared, you know, you know, for their future. And they love it, they love it. And the little one, this is her first year there. It was a little, you know, slow forward, you know, because of the other school she went to. Now, she's picking it up, she's doing well, she's an honest student, too. So, I'm very happy with Freedom Prep, I'm happy.
Very good. Any questions for Sean Miles, anyone? Very pleased, very, very here, very pleased to hear about this.
I'm pleased with the school myself.
Very good, sir, very good, sir. And now, and the school city, Camden-based?
Yes.
Thank you.
Camden City, yes.
Good luck to you and the kids as well, thank you. Chairman, welcome back, we're up to number eleven. Ethan Hasbrook is next.
Very good, thank you, sir, very much, Vice Chairman. And Mr. Hasbrook, please. Mr. Hasbrook will be followed by Ann Garcia, of the Vonlin Public Charter School. Good morning, Jim.
Good morning. With me is Tom Deller, he's our state lead ambassador, which is, I call him our top volunteer in the state, so I'm going to defer to him.
Thank you, Ethan.
Good morning, Chairman, Chair, and members of the Budget Committee. My name is Tom Deller, and I'm a volunteer with the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, and I head our advocacy group here in New Jersey. The American Cancer Society estimates that over forty-nine-thousand new cases of cancer will be diagnosed, and over sixteen-thousand deaths will result from cancer in New Jersey this year. While New Jersey is committed to funding cancer screening and cancer research programs, we remain very concerned about the lack of funding for cancer control and cessation programs. Programs which other states have shown help smokers quit their deadly addiction, as well as keep children and adults from using tobacco products and from smoking. Since fiscal year 2013, New Jersey is the only state in the nation to not use any state dollars for tobacco cessation or tobacco control programs, despite realizing over seven-hundred-million dollars a year in tobacco tax revenue. Each year, over twelve-thousand New Jersey citizens are prematurely lost due to tobacco use. Tobacco use costs the state over four-billion dollars in healthcare costs, including one-billion dollars in Medicare expenditures. When the state's program was funded, combined with a high cigarette tax and public smoking restrictions, we fostered a decline in smoking. However, a closer look at the data identifies some disturbing trends. In households with incomes less than fifteen-thousand dollars a year, the smoking rate is increasing. Fifteen New Jersey counties have higher smoking rates than the state average of fifteen-point-eight percent, and eight of those counties have smoking rates over twenty percent. The smoking rate among people with mental illness and addiction is thirty-five percent, and the Medicaid population is approximately twenty-nine percent. Overall, the rate of decline in smoking in New Jersey is being outpaced by the rest of the nation. Experience in other states has proven that a well-funded tobacco control program can have immediate health benefit and will provide long-term savings. By investing thirty-million dollars, New Jersey could see a six-point-five percent decrease in New Jersey's youth smoking rate, seventeen-and-a-half-thousand fewer New Jersey children growing up to becoming addicted adult smokers, six-thousand fewer children growing up only to die prematurely from smoking. A three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-and-a-half-million-dollar decrease in future healthcare expenditures. On a second front of interest to us, today, nearly eighteen, fourteen-million cancer survivors are alive in the United States, thanks to improved screening tools, more effective treatments, and greater understanding of proven prevention strategies. Much of this because of research. In the past two legislative sessions, the budget committees have reinstituted a one-million-dollar appropriation to the New Jersey Commission on Cancer Research, and this year, we're asking the legislature and the governor to increase this appropriation to two-million dollars. We are funding currently one in three qualified cancer research applicants. By doubling to two-million dollars, we could increase that to about fifty percent at research institutions like Rutgers, Princeton, and our newest research centers like Rowan University. Thank you for your consideration and your recommendation to reduce the burden of cancer in New Jersey. in New Jersey.
Thank you, gentlemen, so much for your testimony. On behalf of the Cancer Society, questions, please? Thank you. Next, please, Ann Garcia, Executive Director of Violin Public Charter School, to be followed by Sean Brown. Ms. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and committee members, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Dr. Ann Garcia, and I am one of the founders of three charter schools in Cumberland County. We are not affiliated with a CMO or an EMO. We are individual charter schools, also known as mom and pops. I am the Executive Director for the Violin Public Charter School, located again in Cumberland County. VPCS has been in operation for the last seven years and is a high-performing Tier One charter school. VPCS is a diverse school with approximately 60% of our students in free and reduced lunch programs. VPCS has to do more for less and is held to a higher level of accountability than the local public school district. I'm here today because, as you know, or should know, Cumberland County is the poorest county in the state of New Jersey. With that, we face many challenges for our charter school students. We're asking for your help. We're not asking for additional monies, we're asking that the monies that we're entitled to come to us. Some of the facts on our charter school. The Violin Public Charter School, again, is located in the city of Violin in Cumberland County. I'll keep saying Cumberland County because it seems north receives a lot more money than Cumberland County, who is your poorest county in the state of New Jersey. The Violin Public Charter School, we've been operating since 2009, and we're a Tier One charter school. For everybody's definition, Tier One in the state is a measurement given by the New Jersey DOE for the highest performing charter schools in the state of New Jersey. VPCS has a grade span of kindergarten to eighth, and we have been approved to add ninth grade next year. Now, some funding facts. In 2015, VPCS received, on average, $9,200 per child. This year, we're slated to receive $9,129. This is the lowest charter school per pupil amount in the state of New Jersey. To put into perspective, the average per pupil cost for New Jersey charter school students is calculated in your own guide, the Taxpayer's Guide to Educational Spending. For 2014 was $16,324. For 2015, it was $16,711. Again, I'll remind you, we only received $9,200 per child. Right now, we're asked to prepare a budget that's actually $7,579 less than the average charter school tuition, and New Jersey charter schools are already not fully funded as compared to the traditional public charter schools, or public schools. We do not receive a number of state aids, but most importantly, the adjustment aid. Adjustment aid is already calculated in school districts' budgets. For example, the city of Violin has $34 million in adjustment aid. None of that passes or follows this charter school student. For us, it would mean $3,800 more per child, or an additional $1 million. Another thought would be to look at what the current public school is doing, or the local district, and many of them, or the one we're in, has excess surplus funds to the tune of $9 million that they're not spending. Well, if they're not spending it on their own budget, why not pass that through to the charter schools? We also do not get facility aids, and we should be eligible for the regular operating district grants, or also known as ROD grants. They're competitive grants. We can compete. And last but not least, Violin is providing a choice for parents in the poorest county in the state of New Jersey. We receive the lowest cost per pupil in the state, and we need your help to make situation equitable in Cumberland County. Thank you.
Ms. Garcia, thank you so much for being here. I'm trying to understand, it's my understanding that charter schools are supposed to be given 90%.
If you can find-
In terms of the average cost to educate a child in the public school system, that within the same district of charter school would receive 90%. You're showing a $19,500 cost in the local school system, that's per child, correct?
That is per child, yes.
And a $9,129 for the charter?
That is correct.
And what is the basis for that disparity?
The disparity has been known statewide. The charter schools are not receiving our fair share.
You're talking about, you're talking about 50%.
That's correct.
Members of this committee are well familiar with charter schools, the most radical number I've seen is 60%.
We're in Cumberland County, and that's why I'm here. Cumberland County is receiving less state aid, and it's, where the monies coming into the districts like Violin, Millville, and Bridgeton, is in that adjustment aid figure, and it's not passing through.
So it's the adjustment aid is the problem?
Issue, yes.
And when you've had discussions with the local school system about that, their response has been?
They're not going to pass any of their monies through, and we're doing a better job educating the kids, so we're actually a competitor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Questions, please, from Ms. Garcia? Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, please, Sean Brown, media organizer, Media Mobilizing Project. Mr. Brown, to be followed by Jacob Tucci. Mr. Brown.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Again, my name is Sean Brown. I'm a resident of the city of Camden. I'm a recent graduate from Rutgers University, getting my master's degree in public policy. As the chairman said, I also work for Media Mobilizing Project. That's my daytime job. But today, I actually speak on behalf of young adults in the city of Camden and throughout the state of New Jersey as the founder of Young Urban Leaders, an organization that focuses on leadership development for young adults. As we think about this budget for the next fiscal year, there are just a few things I wanted to share with you. First, although certainly this committee and the Assembly and Senate have done its job, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund needs to be replenished. I come across many young people who have issues as they reach adulthood in finding an affordable place to live, either in their own community where they're from in Camden, or moving to the suburbs. If you think about the income that you get when you're fresh out of college compared to the actual cost of rent, it's really difficult to find a safe place to live that is affordable. And I think that this committee and the state needs to do all that it can to replenish the fund. Health insurance is the second big issue that comes up, whether it's questions about the Affordable Care Act and young people asking how they can sign up for insurance if they aren't, or their parents. But the issue that comes up more commonly is related to dental and vision care. So as you know, even if you do have health insurance through the ACA, that doesn't speak to dental and vision issues. So there are hundreds of people who have, they need a root canal, or their wisdom teeth are growing in, they have a rotten tooth, and there are not a lot of places for them to go to get free dental care without already having insurance in place. But the last and most important issue that I wanted to bring to your attention, committee, is about higher education. In the city of Camden alone, there are 9,000 adults that the Census Bureau calls, refers to their education as "some college, no degree." These are people who started in college, one semester, two semesters, three semesters, dropped out for whatever reasons, it could be family issues, maybe they didn't like school, they found out it wasn't their thing, a numerous amount of issues, but they find that once that 19-year-old that dropped out of college, by the way, without ever having to talk to a human being, because you could do so online, they withdrew, they owe debt, they now don't have a good job, but they do have debt, and when they want to try to get back into a community college, the way to get back in is way more difficult than the way it was to get out. Whether it's Camden County College, or many of the universities throughout the state of New Jersey, they are not set up in a way that makes it where it's easy for a person who's dropped out, that's not on satisfactory academic progress, has a way to get back in where they can pay off the debt that they owe, but also be qualified for financial aid so that they can go to school tuition-free in real time, meaning that their professional outlook is greatly limited because they don't have the credential that's necessary for them to have a successful life in this area. I think this is low-hanging fruit. This is something I've tried to bring to the attention of community colleges over the years, and I think it's something this Assembly, that the Assembly and Senate can take a look at, as we try to create an economy where people are not only prosperous, but have the right credentials for employment.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. You mentioned you've spoken to local officials. Were you talking about Camden County College?
Yes, I mean, just, so I wrote my graduate thesis on this topic of college completion. When I started the leadership organization, I found that although a lot of young people wanted to be leaders, they wanted to be involved in their communities, they also wanted decent jobs, and they knew, and most people think that the pathway to do that is either finish with a college degree, or to get a credential in some type of certificate program. Well, obviously, if you come from a poor family, which all of my members do, then you need either financial aid or a loan to be able to pay for that. So the problem with financial aid is that, once you go to college and drop out, to be able to get financial aid a second time around is really difficult, and college itself doesn't really help in that process. If you happen to know who to talk to at the right time, on the right day, then you might be okay. But if you, a lot of people have, they're embarrassed, they don't know who to talk to, they do work a job where it makes it difficult for them to get to the school between eight and four, maybe no one answers the phone, it does make it more difficult to get back in and finish that program.
Very good, sir. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Questions? Thank you, sir. Next, please, Jacob Tucci, to be followed by Denise Buzz. Is Mr. Tucci here? Mr. Tucci is not here. Okay, how about Denise Buzz? Is Ms. Buzz here? Ms. Buzz will be followed by Dana Palmer.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am a family member. We are-
May I have your name, please, for the record?
My name is Denise Buzz.
Thank you.
This is my sister Penny Buzz, and this is her DSP, her direct support professional, Danielle Salerno. We are members of the New Jersey Network Incorporated Family Networking. We have been blessed to get funding through developmental disabilities, through the Self-Directed Services Program, New Jersey Life Choices, and we are thankful for the level of funding and supporting the future level of funding in the fiscal year 2017. I'd just also like to echo what several other professionals have pointed out today about the challenges that face families. She's able to live home and be very happy, living home through the Self-Directed Services. One of our concerns is direct support professional salaries. The cap is $15 an hour, and we are living proof that it can work. Danielle has been with us for six years. She's at the top level. She's at $15 an hour, and it's a very difficult job. People underestimate the many skills and abilities that go into being a direct support professional and sticking with it and establishing the level of compassion and relationship that she has with my sister Penny. So we would like that to be looked at in the future, and we thank you for your time today. Thank you so much for coming down here, so we don't have to travel up to Trenton because it presents, travel presents challenges. And Penny, would you like to say?
I-
Pass the budget, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Penny. Thank you, Denise, and thank you to your care worker. Any questions, please? Yes, Assemblywoman.
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you for what you do. You know, it's not, as we've heard, it's not the highest-paying profession, but it requires a huge amount of dedication and patience, and I think there are just certain people with certain hearts and personalities that are just so well-suited for this, and thank you for what you do.
In addition to your dedication and commitment, we also recognize practical considerations as well, and that is that when one can make more money per hour flipping burgers. Thank you. Dana Palmer, please. Is Ms. Palmer here? Ms. Palmer is Director of Finance for Inspira Health Network Life. Ms. Palmer will be followed by Pat McKernan. Ms. Palmer, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony. My name is Dana Palmer, and I am Director, as you said, of Finance for Inspira Health Network Life. It is a subsidiary of Inspira Health Network, which is a health network serving Gloucester, Salem, and Cumberland Counties. Life is referred to as "living independently for elders." It is nationally known as PACE program. PACE is a program of all-inclusive care for the elderly. I'm here today as one of five PACE programs in the state, and my request is to maintain funding per enrollee at the same level to allow for continued growth for the entire New Jersey PACE programs. PACE is a unique, community-based care delivery model that provides a continuum of medical and supportive services in order to maintain the well-being of seniors in the community whom are otherwise assessed to be nursing home-eligible. PACE bundles Medicare and Medicaid payments to provide a full range of services for fixed rate. This allows the state the ability to predict costs for their long-term care population. Under a three-way contract between the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, the state and the PACE organization, PACE provides traditional and non-traditional services, such as home modifications, transportation, and other tailored needs for its enrollees. This flexibility is a key reason why PACE is successful in reducing unnecessary emergency room visits, hospital admissions, readmissions, and nursing home admissions for the most vulnerable. As payer and provider of all needed services, PACE organizations such as Inspira Life Program are incentivized by being fully at risk under capitation. Our goal is to offer the right care in the right setting for the right amount of time to achieve the best possible outcome. In the absence of PACE, almost all our participants would need to live in a nursing home. As the Medicaid portion of the state budget grows, PACE provides a cost-effective alternative to permanent nursing home care. Even though all PACE participants have been certified by the state as clinically eligible for nursing home care, over 90% continue to reside in the community. PACE is fully accountable to our patients, families, and the government for the cost and quality of care, accepting 100% responsibility for the cost and quality of care across all providers and settings. The results have been better health outcomes, better value, and settings. I'm here today as PACE is aligned with the state's goals of increasing home care, home and community-based care, yet the New Jersey PACE programs has sustained cuts of 5% and 10% in each of the last two budget years prior to the current fiscal year, which I do appreciate, we all appreciate, the 1.5% increase that we did receive, while being tasked to manage this risk of both Medicare and Medicaid capitation payments for all services needed. Fiscal stability is the key to further development and growth of PACE in New Jersey. The five PACE organizations serve approximately 1,000 individuals daily. Many more individuals have been aged in place in their communities, have already served by PACE. There is an opportunity for this program to significantly grow in many parts of the state, yet based on the past budget cuts, current providers are hesitant to expand their programs, and potential participants sit on the sidelines waiting to see where the funding is headed. The reality for further budget cuts are not sustainable and threaten the viability of this program and ultimately, the quality of care for our participants and their families.
Dana, thank you very much.
Yes.
Any questions? Seeing none, and we have your written testimony as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. Next is Pat McKernan, Chief Operating Officer, Volunteers of America Delaware Valley. Hello, Pat, welcome.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman, Chair, Vice Chairman, Vice Chair, and distinguished members of the Assembly Budget Committee. I'm Pat McKernan. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Volunteers of America Delaware Valley. Volunteers of America is a nonprofit organization that was founded in 1896. We have programs serving the 11 southern counties of New Jersey. Whether it's our services to homeless in Somerset County, our shelters in senior housing in Gloucester County, or providing services to ex-offenders, we've really tried to meet the need of citizens in New Jersey. I'd like to talk today specifically, though, about offender reentry services. Since our founding in 1896, we've been providing reentry services to folks coming out of prison, and currently, today, we have 12 targeted reentry programs in New Jersey, and New Jersey has a lot to be proud of when it comes to prisoner reentry. And I've attached something for you, which you're probably already aware of, that New Jersey's reduced its prison population since 1999. of, that New Jersey's reduced its prison population since 1999 by 31%. And that has been achieved by this public-private partnership that New Jersey has created with nonprofit providers such as Volunteers of America. The New Jersey Department of Corrections and the State Parole Board have a lot to be proud of for creating an infrastructure and alternative to incarcerations. But people slip through those cracks. Folks that max out of prison, people who return from jail, a lot of those folks don't get the opportunity to participate in services, and the legislature recognized that those folks pose a specific risk to public safety. And last year, the legislator gave Volunteers of America a $1.5 million grant to provide services in Atlantic City and Trenton to assist with folks who max out of prison within the last three years, and people who are coming out of county jail. And our charge was to go into Trenton and Atlantic City and serve 200 people in those communities and provide them with services like treatment, and housing, and employment, and that was our goal. To date, and we started roughly around November, and so far, we've served over 400 people. Easily, by the end of the year, we'll serve 600 people. And that would not happen without the assistance of legislators, so we'd like to thank you. However, we were shocked to see that it wasn't in the budget for this year. So we would like to, that obviously is our request today. This is a significant investment in public safety, and we feel very strongly that these services are needed. Without those services, Atlantic City and Trenton basically start over from ground zero, and folks that pose a risk to public safety, who don't have services afforded to them through this partnership that we've created, either with the parole board or this Department of Corrections, again fall through those cracks. I'm trying to rush through, because four minutes goes quickly. I'd also like to talk a little bit about the investment in bail reform. The legislature has allocated $42 million to bail reform. We should be really, really proud of the progress that we've made, or that you've made, and voters have agreed to, that bail reform is needed. Our jails shouldn't be debtors prisons, and judges should not be unable to detain dangerous people just because they can make bail. What we would suggest, too, is that what we've created with Safe Return, our programs that are serving folks that max out and coming out of county jails, could be afforded to assist with the needs of folks who are waiting pretrial. Those folks have very high instances of substance abuse and mental health and housing needs, and this is a vehicle that you've already invested in, and hopefully will reinvest in next year. We think, too, now, this is the time to expand, not retract the investment that you've made in our programs. There is clearly a need in Camden, as well as Cumberland, Gloucester, for us to provide services to folks. I think that with investing $42 million in bail reform, this would be a great time to invest in those services. In anticipation of, why should we spend money on expanding services to ex-offenders, it's a lot cheaper to spend $2,500 on keeping someone in the community than spending $50,000 to incarcerate them.
Pat, thank you.
Four minutes.
I see you did well. And four minutes is longer than you think.
I barely look at this either, so there you go.
It's longer than you think. Any questions for members of the committee?
A quick question, Chair.
Please, Gordon.
You're talking kind of fast.
Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. I understand. So you're asking $3 million?
Well, we're asking for the reinstatement of the 1.5 for Trenton and Atlantic City. We feel that if we could expand that to Camden and Cumberland, Gloucester County, we were asking for that to be replicated.
An additional 1.5 million for that.
1.5. We're not asking, I am not asking for additional dollars for expanding to bail reform, even though it looks like 40% of your jail population will be diverted, which is a good thing, but it also will impact our treatment community for sure. And we feel that that investment that you've already made, and that could make in expanding, would serve as the same vehicle to serve those folks.
Bail reform starts next year?
This year, coming.
This year, which should be in January, and some communities are piloting it early.
January 2017, Kate just told me.
January, okay.
I think a couple pilot programs, county ones, right? Doesn't that state one, right?
Yes.
Ms. Lombardo's okay? Ms. Lombardo's doing well?
Yes, he is. He should be here any minute.
Thanks. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Next, please, the call on Roger Kumpel. Roger, are you here? Come forward. And Rocco Tomazak, Superintendent of Freehold Borough Public Schools, will be after Roger. Roger, welcome.
Mr. Chair and committee members, good morning.
Thank you.
My name is Roger Kumpel. I'm from Burlington County. I'm a farmer and an agriculture. My first item on the agenda today is to discuss the funding for the open space. We know how the process went. It became a ballot issue, and it was passed, and we went through the determining who got how much money, and we got past all that, just to find out that we got 66.7 or whatever odd number of million to have, and then to find out that we may, we possibly could lose 44% right off the top, some 29 million, to be used for another issue at the governor's request. We think that it's very critical right now for open space, whether it's green acres, or farmland preservation, or historic, to keep this momentum going of a project that we started many moons ago, and we've done a very good job, meaning you folks have done a very good job. We know that getting a permanent source of funding is a very hard decision to make, because it's hard to find money. We're in bad times. We realize that. But I guess my issue is that at the SADC, the State Ag Development Committee, we are now, since 213, we've had no additional money. We're out of money now. That money has been allocated, and it's just in the midst of being finalized out. The county ag developments are pretty much in the same situation. We have a little money here, and a little money there. That's basically, that's depleted, too. We have no matching funds to work with. So I asked the committee to review this and see if this can't be changed, to get it back to what the voters' intent, and as a voter, my intent was that we had a program that was going to travel on. I guess another item of thought when it comes to agriculture is the New Jersey Department of Agriculture, the Animal Lab, which responds to all the inhumane or humane issues with livestock. We are now, it's a mandate, we have to, we're first responders, we have to do this, and it's something we like to do. We want to be there, because we recognize, we know the animals. Anyhow, every time we go out, I spoke with the state veterinarian just at the ag convention. He said, every time that they send a person out, time they do all the follow-ups, they figure they got roughly $900 in every one of these cases, and they're getting more and more and more all the time. So they have no place to pull from to get money, and so it's kind of really putting them in a bad way. And the same thing goes for the Alampi Impact Lab, which pertains to the bugs and insects. That is kind of, we're short-funded there to keep the programs for emerald ashbore, which we've had in the northern part of the state, and it's all over the state, and we have many other issues involved. Making it fast. The next issue is the Rutgers Ag Experiment Station. We need to see if we can't help those folks out, too. We have another mandate, it's been mandated as federal. We have the issue with food safety, and it's very important to every person in this room. I mean, we, food safety is an issue which the college puts on programs, seminars for the farms. They do help with inspections and help keep the farmers in compliance with the Food Safety Act. So I just ask you to think about these issues, because we're confronted with them. We have nothing we can do about it. We got to meet it.
Roger, first of all, thank you. We're very sensitive to the agricultural community and industry in the state. Now, we'll have an opportunity to go into the Department of Agriculture's budget at a subsequent hearing. Doug Fisher, who served along with me in the third legislative district, is a very good voice. So you're in touch with that department, I take it correct?
Yes, yes. I served on the state board. I was president in 2009, 210, so.
We appreciate that very much. If you can just make sure that the Secretary of Agriculture is prepared for that committee hearing to help reiterate some of what you have made today, and we will be happy to take a deeper look and see if we can squirrel something together here to help it along.
And you will receive a copy of my discussion today, too, also.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Anyone else? John, did you want, John Demay? I see your hand in the air. You okay? You almost got called on. You okay? No, it's okay. Anyone else?
Trying to help you out, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Roger. Rocco Tomazak, I'm going to pass the back, Chairman, you want it back? Are you okay?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Mr. Rocco Tomazak, Superintendent of Freehold Borough Public Schools, and Mr. Jared Rumage, Red Bank Borough Schools. Gentlemen, welcome this morning. They will be followed by the Reverend Sarah Lilia, or Lilja, I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Rocco Tomazak, and I am the Superintendent of Freehold Borough School District. With me is Jared Rumage, Superintendent of Red Bank Borough School District. We come from small districts in Monmouth County that have large Hispanic populations, and we find ourselves in extraordinary circumstances. The growth in our districts has been unprecedented. We come here before you today to speak with one voice to highlight a problem of mutual concern.
We echo the sentiments, earlier sentiments, of the Lindenwald leadership team. Both of our districts are also severely underfunded. The previous two years of flat funding state aid, and the current proposal, which essentially is flat funding, have placed us in extraordinary circumstances. We have heard from many that the formula to fund schools needs to be changed. While that might be debated, we would submit, much like Lindenwald did earlier, that what is needed now is to have the will to divide what funds are available by the current funding formula, and that must be done now.
Our districts would not be in the dire straits that we are in now if the state aid were readjusted, taking funds away from the overfunded districts and reallocating those funds to the underfunded districts. Yes, we would still be short of the amount due under the School Funding Reform Act, but the distribution of available state aid would be fair, and the burden on our local taxpayers would be more rational. This year, of the top 15 most underfunded districts in New Jersey, 10 of them are highly Hispanic. Red Bank is the 13th most underfunded district in the state, and Freehold Borough is in the third position most underfunded.
This year, additional money was available for education, but new and relatively unnecessary budget categories were created, thus making less funds available for equalization aid and reducing the impact on underadequacy. In Red Bank, we also have the additional burden of coexisting with a charter school that takes a percentage of our operating budget. Pumping more money to overadequate districts while underadequate districts starve for funds is wrong. We look to you to make the distribution of state aid fair and consistent with the School Funding Reform Act, which remains the current law in New Jersey. On the sheets we have provided is the data to back up our testimony. We do have one correction where you see a four-and-a-half-year increase regarding enrollment. That time period should actually be six-and-one-half years. We apologize for the error, and we thank you for your
Questions, please. Please, Assemblyman Nuske.
Very much appreciate both of you being here. I think you've spoken directly to me or Senator Beck about this issue at some length. It's great to see it really coming to the forefront now. It's sad that it has to, but I want to assure you that Lindenwald's testimony earlier caught a lot of folks' attention. The chairman and I are both interested in more quickly resolving this issue. It won't happen overnight. It won't happen in one budget. I think we all accept that and know it, but it's a situation that has to be rectified. We have to have the guts to redistribute existing money. That's a much higher hurdle than unfortunately it should be, but it's good that it's getting the attention that it is. I appreciate you both coming all the way down here to strengthen the message, and we're going to pursue every option, every solution that we can. I think the administration will be receptive, and I'm hoping that we can get considerably further along in solving this problem with all that bipartisan support, and make it happen quicker than we thought otherwise just a few months ago. So thank you for being here. There's no question that it's horrific that you have to deal with these issues. I will say, I used to represent Freehold and Red Bank. I no longer do, but it's a matter of being fair to the children of New Jersey. It doesn't matter, my district or not. So I look forward to really passionately advocating on behalf of those districts that are as underadequately funded as you two are. Thanks.
Thank you, Assemblyman. Assemblyman, Vice Chair Versace Kelly, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Just briefly, gentlemen, so just to be very clear, there is not an issue with the building blocks that make up the school funding formula. The issue continues to be that in these recent years, when cuts were made to public school funding, the cuts were not made proportionate and related to the district's profile against that school funding formula. You just got a cut in number, and there's no recognition of the population of the school district. You're just getting a number from us at this point.
The number was held, but our student enrollment increased, so we became more underadequate.
So again, it's just, there are children in your district not being recognized as being there and being funded based on the present school funding formula.
Yes.
Thank you. And in other districts, there are now less kids, but you're still getting the same amount of money.
Yes.
It's very confusing that it is being handled this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Assemblyman Rodriguez, Greg, please.
Yes, I just had a quick question regarding the unnecessary budget categories. Can you enlighten me as to what those are?
Well, I'll start off, and Jared will chime in if I miss something. We focus on the professional learning community aid, the $4 per head, per student. If a district is overfunded, they get that money as well. So what happens if there was $100 million available to help out in education, some of this money, if it's put into a separate budget bracket, PLC aid, that means it's not available in the bracket for equalization. So by creating this bracket that everybody gets the same thing, you're sending money that is available to help solve the problem to overfunded districts and reducing the amount of money that could have gone into equalization aid and solve the underadequacy problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblywoman. This issue, both Superintendent Tomazak and Superintendent Rumage, number one, thank you first and foremost for taking time out of your busy schedules to be with us today. As you alluded to, we've had the pleasure to hear from the superintendent, as well as the President of the Board of Education from Lindenwald earlier, and we had the great pleasure of welcoming Assemblywoman Moriarty and Assemblywoman Mascara in terms of hearing about this item. I will tell you, in the past number of days, despite their newness to the legislature, both Assemblyman Hoteling and Assemblywoman Downey have also raised this issue most eloquently, in terms of net effects that whatever happened has happened, and it does not seem to make any rational sense whatsoever. It would seem to me that we should have gotten response from the department in terms of the proposal for this budget. I will assure you that this is an item which we will be sharing with the Speaker and asking him to make as high priorities as necessary. The issue, as you both eloquently stated, is not so much the amount of money that is being allocated, but how the money is being allocated. To have some school districts at 120% to 130% of funding is one thing. To have other school districts at 60% or 70% of funding is quite another, and you can't be expected to do your job without that being done. Clearly, education is one of the most fundamental aspects of the state's concern, or should be, and for reasons that I don't think any of us quite understand, this issue has not been apparently, has not been addressed budgetarily by the department. Let us commit to the both of you, as well as to your colleagues across the state, those districts which are receiving this inadequate funding, that it will be an issue of prime importance during our discussions with the Commissioner of Education, Dr. Hespe, and we look forward to understanding from him, on a non-political basis, why it is that the disparity continues to exist year after year, obviously deleteriously affecting children in your districts and children throughout the state. We thank you both for being here today.
Thank you.
Next, please, Reverend Sarah Lilia, Director Lutheran Episcopal Advocacy Ministry, New Jersey. Reverend Lila will be followed by Susan Delaney.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you very much for inviting me to testify, and I really want to begin by thanking the Assembly and the Speaker and all your fine work on the issues of the poverty legislation that's been moving through the Assembly, and it's such an important issue for us and for the body with whom I work. I represent the Lutherans and the Episcopalians in the state of New Jersey, about 80,000 faithful members, and we're very concerned about this growing disparity between the wealthy and the poor in the state, this income inequality, as it's known. It has sort of catchy language and sometimes seems a little bit out of reach of our real understanding that there are, New Jersey is the fourth-most wealthy state in the nation, while at the same time, poverty continues to grow. And when we talk about poverty, there's a couple different categories, and that's what I'd like to direct my attention to. I have sort of specific written testimony, but I'd like to just take a moment and talk about poverty as we understand it and experience it and work with people who are struggling. There are people in our state who are extremely poor, and these people are making, you know, $10,000 or less a year, and these people really benefit from, they're sometimes employed and unemployed easily, quickly. Sometimes they're seasonal workers. Sometimes they have health problems that keep them out of the labor force. In any event, they're really struggling at the bottom end of sustainability. Those people benefit very much from TANF grants and assistance- Those people benefit very much from TANF grants and assistance for people who are in real dire straits around economic sustainability. But then there's a whole nother category of people in our state. This is the working poor. These are people who are working for hourly wages. These people are struggling sometimes to get forty hours a week. They're on the schedule, they're off the schedule. You know, there's all kinds of variations around their income, and those people benefit greatly from things like the Earned Income Tax Credit and things that assist in the low wage workers. So, we're here today to advocate for the needs of all of those people who are struggling and to help you all as legislators understand that it's sort of not a one size fits all sort of solution when we talk about a poverty agenda, that there are very different needs in our state related to people who are really struggling to make ends meet and that we, as policymakers and people who care about those who are struggling, need to take seriously the unique situations that people find themselves in and craft public policy and budget appropriately so that various needs can be responded to appropriately. And that's a sophisticated business and it's hard to talk about quickly and succinctly, but it really calls upon all of us in our better nature to take the time to truly understand who our brothers and sisters are in the state and what their needs are and how we, as leaders of this state, can come together to truly begin to address and remedy this great disparity because all New Jerseians need access to opportunity and access to a better life, and we have those resources available and we have a moral obligation to care for them and to work through that. That's all I really want to say today, if you have any questions, but I have sort of specific recommendations here in my written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Any questions for Reverend? Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much for being here. Is Susan Delaney, was here, I know stepped out. Is she here now? We'll hear her later than when she comes back. Evelyn Liebman, Ms. Liebman is Associate State Director for AARP. To be followed, pleased by Ken Wolski. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, Chairman Chair, Vice Chairman Burzichelli and Republican Budget Officer O'Scanlon and members of the committee. Thank you for conducting this hearing in South Jersey. With me today is Lillian Crowley, an AARP member and volunteer with our advocacy team and who hails from Willingboro. We have submitted written testimony and so we'll just highlight some of the major issues that we're focused on on behalf of our 1.3 million members throughout New Jersey. As you all well know, the state budget has a significant impact on the economic and health security, not only of our members, but all New Jerseians throughout the state. Retirement security is a core component of our mission to enhance the quality of life for all as we age, and to that end, we fight both at the state and federal level to ensure that all workers who have paid into their public pension system over a lifetime of hard work have financial security in retirement. We know that New Jersey's civil servants did not cause the problems our pension programs face, and they have consistently made their pension payments on time and in full. The governor has proposed contributing 1.86 billion dollars into the declining government pension system for fiscal year seventeen. We do believe that is a good step in the right direction, but we know that that still is only forty percent of what actuaries are recommending we pay. This system impacts the lives of approximately eight hundred thousand families in New Jersey who depend on their pensions for their own financial security in retirement, including many of our members, and we look forward to working with you and the administration to continue to strengthen that system. Also, as you've heard, we support efforts through the budget and through other legislative measures to ensure the economic security for all New Jerseians, particularly those who are most at risk and most vulnerable. We support and urge you to support updating our LIHE program, specifically the Heat and Eat program, so that we can restore SNAP or food stamp benefits to approximately a hundred and sixty thousand New Jerseians disproportionately elderly and disabled residents. And along those same lines, we also support and urge you to support increasing our TANF program, whose payments have not been increased in almost three decades. We are particularly concerned about the increasing number of grandparents who are raising grandchildren and can't possibly adequately provide for those grandchildren on payments that haven't been increased in almost thirty years. And before I turn it over to Lillian, I just want to add, we again very much support the governor and the legislature's efforts to continue the Medicaid expansion, which now, we're proud to say, has increased coverage for four hundred and more thousand previously uninsured residents of New Jersey. And we do support the governor's proposal to increase the Medicaid budget by three million dollars to support the three Medicaid ACO initiatives here in the state. AARP is a proud board member of the Camden Coalition of Healthcare Providers, one of the three ACOs which we think will provide lessons for our entire healthcare system in providing better care at lower costs. And now, I'll turn it over to Lillian.
Before you begin, ma'am, if we could start the clock again, please, OLS. Yes, please, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm a seventy-five-year-old widow living alone in my
Could we ask you to speak into the microphone?
Sorry, sorry.
I'm a seventy-five-year-old widow living alone in my own home. Thank God, I'm physically able to do that. Most seniors would like to stay in their own homes, and physically, as I said, I'm able to do it financially. Property taxes are a big burden. The homestead rebate is only being funded roughly at half. The senior freeze has an income limit that is supposed to change, but hasn't changed. There's a lot of towns that are falling below the two percent property tax increase cap. I have friends in Atlanta County who went to retire at the shore with the closing of Casino's link of twenty-two thousand workers. The county taxes have risen astronomically for them. Property taxes keep so many seniors out of being able to stay in their own homes, seniors who can, are able. Also, and she mentioned the Medicaid for the managed care, that's a wonderful program if it can help people who are, as we all become physically, it can happen to all of us physically unable to take care of ourselves, to still be able to stay in our homes as long as we can. Please help the seniors stay in their own homes. Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you both. This was very instructive and informative. Questions, please. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Ken Wolski, Executive Director, Coalition for Medical Marijuana. Is Mr. Wolski here? Mr. Wolski will be followed by Michael Piper.
Chairman Chair, Vice Chairman Burzichelli and members of the Assembly Budget Committee, thank you so much for having, giving me the opportunity to testify today. My name is Ken Wolski. I'm an Executive Director of the Coalition for Medical Marijuana in New Jersey. We're a nonprofit 501(c)(3) educational organization. We've been in the state for thirteen years now, and we were instrumental in getting the Compassionate Use Medical Marijuana Act passed into law. I've been, I'm also a registered nurse. I've been, this is my fortieth year as an RN in the state of New Jersey and in Pennsylvania. And I spent twenty-five years working for the state of New Jersey, four years at Trent Psychiatric Hospital and twenty-two years with the New Jersey Department of Corrections. I'm here today not to ask for money, but to suggest ways that can result in significant savings to the state institutional budgets, and that is by making medical marijuana lozenges available in public institutions. The Compassionate Use Act was passed, as I said, in 2010 and recognizes marijuana as medicine in the state of New Jersey. And it does this for poorly managed conditions such as seizure conditions and Crohn's disease and neurological conditions. And if marijuana was available in these lozenges for the patients in the state institutions, you would see not only a decrease in the need for expensive pharmaceutical drugs, but also a decrease in the need for hospitalizations and surgical procedures and emergency transport. Just one year ago this month, in March of 2015, the Department of Health published guidelines for the marijuana edibles, including the lozenges. So, these lozenges are ready to be manufactured in the alternative treatment centers, and they can be done in a consistent and reliable way that will make it comfortable for the physicians to order and for the nurses to administer in these institutions. I've toured one of the eight alternative treatment centers and I see that the marijuana that is grown in these alternative treatment centers are grown from mother plants. They are all clones so that they have the same genetic material so that these lozenges will be essentially equivalent to pharmaceutical products. There is enormous therapeutic potential for marijuana in addition. For example, when we see that a patient is treated for a seizure disorder, that patient's autism, autistic behavior is also improved. The self-injurious behavior is lessened, the self-destructive behavior is lessened, and the patients are more likely to be educable. And we see it also with elderly patients. You treat marijuana for one condition and you wind up treating for three or four conditions. Chronic pain, nausea, appetite stimulation and depression can all be treated through the use of marijuana therapy. So, these lozenges that will soon be available here in the state of New Jersey, there should be no problem putting them in the state institutions to significantly decrease the cost. We're talking about saving hundreds of thousands of dollars each year in estate budgets. And I do have a track record of saving the state that type of money as I noted in my written remarks. So, thank you again for this opportunity and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Wolski. Thank you so much for being here today. Assemblyman O'Scanlon, please.
And thank you very much for being here again. I'm looking for definitive clinical studies that establish efficacy of marijuana treatments on specific conditions. If you can forward those to the chair, I'm interested.
Absolutely.
We hear anecdotal and claims that most marijuana efficacy claims are simply anecdotal. I want to cross over and make sure that I'm documenting where I'm going to advocate with real clinical, definitive clinical studies. So, I'm very interested in that.
Well, thank you for your ongoing support of this, Assemblyman O'Scanlon. We're very appreciative of your efforts and I will certainly get the documentation to you that you request, and I want to let you know that marijuana really is one of the most studied drugs in the entire world. It's been around for thousands of years and it's been used medically for that long as well in many different cultures, and there are a great many studies and I will forward them.
I have some, but we're not quite there. I'm very interested in what you have. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblyman. Mr. Wolski, if you could forward those to our Legislative Services offices and they'll be distributed to all members.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Wolski? Before turning to our next speaker, we have the great pleasure to welcome Assemblyman Barkley. Assemblyman, would you like to address us for just a moment? Thank you so much for joining with us today, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's good to be here. You guys, unfortunately, Conant was not in my district, but Camden is the next town over. Heard you guys run a town, just wanted to just come bless you, you know, and just let you guys know, any way I can help, I'm always available. I'm fairly new to the organization. I've been sworn in about two months now and I'm enjoying every moment of it and I'm learning the best that I can. And again, I just wanted to let you know that if I could help out in any way, I'm here. And I just want to stop and say, basically say hi to everyone. Just let everybody know I'm here.
Assemblyman, we know how busy your schedule is and we are most appreciative that you took your time to join us today.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is he buying us lunch? Is that what he said?
I think lunch is actually already bought for you.
Whatever you guys need, I got you. I run out of pen pizza or temples, which is a good stromboli from down South Jersey.
Thank you, Assemblyman. Thank you for being with us again. Next, please, is Mr. Michael Piper with us. Mr. Piper will be followed by Lynn Brown. Mr. Piper.
I can assure the committee that this is not an episode of Groundhog Day. This has been brought up a few times today. Chairman Chair and the members of the Budget Committee, my name is Michael Piper and I sit before you today as a concerned father and taxpayer from Delran Township, New Jersey. As you all know, in 2008, the New Jersey Legislature approved the School Funding Reform Act, a law designed to ensure that all public school districts would receive the funds necessary to provide their students with inadequate education. The SFRA funding formula takes into consideration local tax levies and individual student demographic information that affects per pupil costs, and district aid is calculated and distributed accordingly. Came along. The funding formula qualifies My district, Delran Township, has been underfunded by SFRA, almost eighty million dollars in the last seven years. Put simply, the state's failure to fund the SFRA formula coupled with the state's failure to wean comparatively overfunded districts off of adjustment aid and redistribute those funds to the chronically underfunded districts will continue to directly negatively affect the children, families and taxpayers throughout the state. These problems must be addressed and remediated as soon as possible or our children will suffer the consequences of chronic underfunding and our taxpayers will be tasked with compensating for the state's spending failures. As I stated in my opening, I'm a father, I'm a taxpayer. My concern is for our children and their future. I implore each and every one of you to make sure that the SFRA funding formula is implemented fairly, that adjustment aid be redistributed from over adequacy districts and that all children receive the aid which they are entitled according to the very law this legislature passed in 2008. Our children, our schools and our taxpayers depend on it. I would like to thank Annie McQ, an English teacher in our district, for her writing prowess with helping with this statement. Thank you for your time, your consideration, your advocacy. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Piper, thank you so much for adding your voice to the many other voices that we're hearing on this subject. I assure you that it only continues to add gravity to the situation and we appreciate you being here on behalf of Delran. Any questions for Mr. Piper, please? Assemblyman Singleton.
Chairman, thank you. First and foremost, Mr. Piper, one of my bosses from Delran. It's good to see you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you as well.
This issue, we've heard a lot about it and I'm glad it keeps being raised. And Chairman, last year during our last budget hearings when issues like this came up, I had actually worked on a proposal that we had introduced to address this issue of the adequacy aid not being done adequately, no pun intended. That proposal last legislative cycle was Assembly Bill 2188. Hearing the outcry that we've heard today and hearing the dialogue from my friend and colleague, Assemblyman O'Scanlon and others, it is my intention to reintroduce that proposal under the construct of what we heard today, rather than trying to augment the aid category, which we probably all would like to do, but recognize the fiscal challenges we face, but going forward to try and make sure within the calculation of what we already have as aid, that we make the adjustments a bit more fairly. I've already instructed my office to engage OLS in retooling that proposal and I am hopeful that my colleagues, once they get a chance to look at it, will be willing to join as members of this committee in trying to make that happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Assemblyman, and thank you for your continued support and your guidance on this issue. I know that all of us would look forward to whatever results you get from OLS in terms of, again, providing us further direction in terms of how to accomplish this goal. Mr. Piper, you've been very kind with your time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next, please Lynn Brown, President and Chief Executive Officer of Planned Parenthood of Southern New Jersey. Ms. Brown will be followed by Reverend Dr. Jeffrey Kirk. Ms. Brown, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comment on a very significant aspect of the 2017 state budget. My name is Lynn Brown and I am the President and Chief Executive Officer of Planned Parenthood of Southern New Jersey. We're a community-based health center which provides comprehensive reproductive health services and education in three southern counties, Camden, Burlington and Atlantic Counties. This morning, you've heard many indicators of the struggles that are going on in health and social service agencies. Struggles about infrastructure, IT technology, just issues that have to do with the expansion of doing business in today's very changing world. And for us in the healthcare world, the family And for us in the healthcare world, though, family planning is no exception to the gigantic changes that are happening in healthcare around us. I'm here today to talk about the devastating impact of Governor Christie's elimination of funding for women's health and family planning in the state budget and how it has for the last several years and will continue to adversely affect thousands of women and families who depend upon these critical public health services. Our family planning center, Planned Parenthood of Southern New Jersey, for 80 years has enjoyed a well-established reputation in the community as a major provider of reproductive health care, especially in the city of Camden, and as an important public health care provider in Atlantic City. We provide a wide range of family planning medical services which are affordable and accessible. Medical care includes family planning, GYN examinations, contraception, all the methods of birth control, pregnancy testing and counseling, breast exams, cervical cancer screening, STD testing and treatment, HIV testing, the HPV vaccine, men's reproductive health care services, and even vasectomy for men who have completed their families. Our patients could be your daughters, they could be your sons, they could be your granddaughters, or they could be people who work for you domestically or in the service industry, people who so often fall on the lower rungs of the economic ladder. You've heard the eloquent testimony this morning about the working poor. That's the face of many Planned Parenthood or family planning patients. Our patients are every ethnicity, education level, sexual orientation, and sometimes they're very young and very frightened. Ninety percent of our patients fall at or below the federal poverty level. That's whom we're serving. It's evident for many of these women and teens that family planning is their entree into the healthcare delivery system. Needing family planning or needing a reproductive health care service really enters them into the healthcare delivery system. It's a very important link to connecting them to all other kinds of health services. In 2010, Governor Christie eliminated a state line, a state budget line item that allocated $7.5 million for family planning, and that included the preventive healthcare services associated with family planning, all the services that I just mentioned, STD testing, cancer screening services, all the services that keep women and families healthy. The impact of family planning budget cuts has been devastating. Thirty-seven thousand fewer patients were provided care in 2013 compared to 2009, and we have seen an increase in the sexually transmitted infection rate in this state of 27 percent. Some patients have lost their services immediately when the cuts came. Some patients...
Ma'am, thank you so very, very much for your testimony today. It is most appreciated.
I will be willing to answer questions.
Thank you so much. Questions for Ms. Brown? Thank you so very much, Ms. Brown. Next, please, Reverend Dr. Jeffrey Kirk, to be followed by Susan Delaney from Corial Institute for Medical Research.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, and I am deeply grateful to you for coming to have this hearing and for the opportunity to address you. My name is Jeffrey Kirk. For 25 years, I've been a resident with my wife in Camden County. We happily raise two children in the Cherry Hill Public Schools and in that community, and I serve as Rector of Grace Episcopal Church in Merchantville. As a community faith leader, I come before you today to urge that the New Jersey State Legislature restore full funding for family planning services across our state, funding that was slashed in 2010. I stand with family planning providers as part of Christ's mission, announcing good news to the poor, disenfranchised, and needful. The prophet Micah rhetorically asked eight centuries before Jesus, "What does the Lord require of you but to do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly with your God?" This is the theology with which I approached this morning's hearing. Clergy and prominent leaders of both political parties have supported organizations such as Planned Parenthood from the earliest days of the family planning movement. I'm proud to honor this tradition. For me, it is very much a matter of compassion, mercy, and justice that is provided for indigent women, men, and their families. Those who relentlessly seek to deny access to reproductive health care, for those who are most vulnerable, I believe, are mistaken about what it means to be a Christian. Family planning providers offer a range of health care services, including preventive life-saving care such as cancer screenings, testing for HIV/AIDS and contraceptives that reduce unwanted pregnancies and abortions. Were these organizations not part of the broader healthcare system, where would uninsured people turn for their reproductive health care? The answer, of course, is nowhere. They have been left out in the cold and the effects of our willful neglect are manifest throughout New Jersey. After family planning funding was eliminated from the state budget in 2010, healthcare centers across the state were forced to cut back hours or staff to close their doors altogether. Among the many problems created, health centers have struggled to keep up with the demand for sexually transmitted diseases and infections, as Lynn Brown commented a moment ago, and to do proper testing and treatment. Last month, new data showed an alarming trend. In 2014, more than 37,000 bacterial STIs were diagnosed in New Jersey. Since 2009, the last year that family planning was funded in the state budget, the rate of bacterial STIs has risen more than 27 percent statewide. In one-third of New Jersey counties, the rate has risen nearly 50 percent. Because family planning's cost to the state for some years was only $7.5 million, or 0.3 percent of the state budget, it's obvious that eliminating this funding was a fake economy. The 2010 precipitous budget cut has yielded tragic personal consequences and costly delayed public health interventions. We have shortchanged preventive care and added a totally unnecessary human and financial burden to the state. All our citizens deserve medically accurate information, the opportunity for personal decisions, and access to the reproductive care they believe is right, within the bounds of settled law and the equal protection clause of the United States Constitution.
Reverend, thank you. Thank you for your testimony. I think Assemblywoman has a question, Maria. Assemblyman O'Scanlon will jump in while the Assemblywoman...
Reverend, thank you for being here. I appreciate your being here. And as I've said in past hearings, without commenting on the wisdom of the cut or not, our ultimate goal, I think all of us, is to make sure that everybody, especially the most needy amongst us, and especially amongst our women population, I'll be sexist to say I care more about them than about us, should get the care that they deserve. Have you run into specific women who said they had trouble accessing care?
I haven't specifically, although we have a food pantry, which is now in operation today at my church. We feed 400 people per month, and my guess is if I sat down and talked to any number of those people, they would answer affirmatively that this has been a problem.
Well, let's open that line of communication. When that happens, and I've said to folks and said publicly, if people, and the Commissioner of Health, who I spoke to a few years ago when this cut was made, and the pledge was made to me, "Bring me specific folks who are saying that they're having trouble accessing care. Give us the opportunity to provide the care through FQHCs, et cetera." I haven't had anyone take me up on that, which is interesting to me. If these cuts had the impact that I'm hearing about, I thought I would have had folks, thousands...
Yes, well, but I wouldn't want to imply that there is no need because I can't identify specific individuals. I have actually, as I think back now, in several years, had people who've needed family health planning, reproductive planning information, and I have referred them to Planned Parenthood.
Okay, well, you now have a legislator that wants to hear as well, and with a direct line to our Health Department. So, I'm interested in helping people get the access to care that they need. So, please, feel free. The door's open, I'm easy to find. Use us as a resource going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, Assemblywoman, is there a follow-up?
Yes, sorry about that, yes. What other, besides Planned Parenthood, what other organizations, health centers in your area provide the same services?
So far as I know, we are the only one, but Lynn Brown, who is our executive director, would be better able to answer that than I.
Okay. I'm just curious, because I mean, when these people come to you with concerns, I mean, are you, as a community leader and a religious leader, able to refer them to other places? Because it's my understanding that there are other health centers and organizations that are able to provide these services within your area.
Certainly, there are a multitude of various services in the area. There is a women's center in Cherry Hill, which would provide some services, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend, thank you. Before, Gordon, before you go, Lynn, I'd like to ask you to come back to the table, please. A couple of questions I think directed to the Reverend would have been better directed to you. Gordon, would you care to start your question? And I have a question for Lynn. Then you mentioned 37,000 women that would otherwise be in your system, were not able to be served by your system statewide. Assemblyman O'Scanlon accurately reflects what the Commissioner of Education has said to this Budget Committee repeatedly, the Commissioner of Education, the Commissioner of Health, repeatedly over budget cycles since that had occurred, that no female in New Jersey in need of this type of service would be without it, there were other places to go. The Assemblywoman just asked the Reverend, you know, sort of directly, I think maybe declared it as well, is in fact anyone not being served. Where do those 37,000 go? And what's happened to you? Because we're being, the Health Commissioner is telling us collectively that there's not an issue. You're telling us there's an issue, the Reverend's saying there's an issue.
We would like to know, because these are women who do not easily access care. So, we know that because of the profile of our patients, many of these women have simply fallen through the cracks of society. And we will start to see, I'm sure, other serious public health indicators escalating, because these are the women who are in the inner cities. These are the women who fall below the poverty lines. These are the women who don't know how to access care. They come to a family planning center because they know they will get their compassionate family planning care. It's trusted, it's confidential, they will be able to afford whatever they need for contraception. It's a sliding fee scale.
If I may, I think we've recognized the range of service. I don't mean to be rude to be interrupting, more gets to the point, because Assemblyman O'Scanlon raised it, the Assemblywoman raised it, the defined, I realize it may be hard to define, we're trying to understand it. Assemblyman Johnson, you have a question?
Just a quick question. You said in your testimony, 90 percent of your clients are under the federal poverty level in terms of income. Also, let's talk about male, male health, okay? You do, what services do you provide for...
For male reproductive health?
Well, in general, you have cancer screening?
Cancer screening, STD testing, HIV testing. They, if they have an STD, they can be treated. They, if they have, if they need partner treatment for their female, for their female partner, they can be treated. We give them condoms. If it's a gentleman who has completed his family, we are fortunate to be able to provide vasectomy services. So, we recognize that the male, the male patient is just as important in reproductive health as the female.
And you are located within the urban areas of this state?
Absolutely, absolutely.
As opposed to going out to a suburban area?
In the heart of Camden, in the heart of Atlantic City.
Right.
You know, those, we do have another suburban site in Delran, but we are the core of the inner-city healthcare delivery system.
I bring that up because I question the ability to get to a facility if you're in the, a core, an urban area that has bus service, let's say, as opposed to...
Oh, that's an absolute factor. There are multiple factors. You're absolutely correct, Assemblyman.
Okay, thank you.
Chair. Thank you, Assemblyman. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, Assemblyman O'Scanlon is next and you'll close out.
And thank you for coming on back up.
You're welcome.
And look, I understand within your hearts where you're coming from. I think we're all on the same page here. We want to make sure women who need these services, especially the folks that fall below the poverty line or are in need economically or somehow, have access to this care. Over the past probably six years now, I've asked if we have, and I hear the number 37,000 or 67, whatever the number is, I've asked, "Let me know who we have specifically who's having trouble accessing care or having trouble getting to a care facility," and I haven't had one call to my office. Now, I see the numbers of the family planning centers did in fact go down by around 50,000 from 2009 to 2014. But I also see during that same period, visits to federally qualified health centers went up by even more than that. So, and I think you mentioned that family planning centers are confidential and trusted. I don't think you mean to imply that federally qualified health centers aren't confidential and trusted, but it would seem that these women are almost directly shifted over to the federally qualified health centers and are getting the care that they need. I am anxious to hear from folks that aren't, and so is the Commissioner of Health. So, I want that line of communication open. But if you know of someone specifically who hasn't been able to get that care, I'll say it again, I want to hear and I want to help get them the access to that care that they need. But it does seem that it is not as if these women are simply not getting care. It seems as if they are getting it just from somewhere else. And again, if they're not, I want to note...
May I comment?
Sure.
We're not going to go back and forth to that extent at this point, because it's been discussed and it will be discussed again when the Health Commissioner visits us. Assemblyman Moye, please.
I just wanted to know if there was any data available regarding how much treatment has ended up costing the state over what it would have cost us to provide preventative care since 2009 for clinics such as yours? Do you have any data on that?
Yes, that data is available, and I would be happy to ensure that you receive that data.
That would be great. I also wanted to point out a statistic in the Reverend's testimony that he was not able to get to, but that in the four counties where health centers were closed after the 2010 funding cuts, the STI rate has risen even higher than the 27 percent...
That is correct. Burlington County is one of the ones in Southern New Jersey. You're absolutely correct.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Assemblywoman Rodriguez, Maria?
Yes. You were pointing, it's on. Okay, there you go. So, we've been discussing about, I believe Assemblyman O'Scanlon made a point about the federally qualified healthcare centers, and it seems there are several in Camden, in the heart of Camden, in the urban center that people are able to gain access to. Do you think there's just a lack of awareness? Because it seems to me that Planned Parenthood is a brand name, in a way. It is a known name, it is a trusted name in terms of family planning services, preventative services, and that there, even though there are other qualified health, federally qualified health centers that are providing these services, that because there's this reduction in funding for Planned Parenthood, but there is an allocation of funding for these other centers, that maybe there's just a lack of awareness, that there, I mean, the Reverend, that's why I asked you, you weren't aware of other centers that provided these services? So, do you think it could just be a lack of awareness? Because I, obviously, as a woman, I want to make sure that other women are cared for. I don't want to see the STD rates go up.
It's not a lack of awareness. I very proudly say in our district that we work in concert with the FQHCs, and we see each other as very necessary public health care providers. We look to them for primary care, we look to them to refer a lot of issues that we pick up in the family planning center, and they look to us as the specialists for reproductive health. So, we really work in concert, and that's what public health is all about. Let's remember too, that our doors are open to the very young and the fragile and the vulnerable. If you're 17, perhaps going to an institution which, like Planned Parenthood, will give you that comfort level that you've taken that brave step to cross the threshold into healthcare. I'm not saying that other institutions don't do that, but that really is the hallmark of Planned Parenthood, opening their doors for education and being able to work with the patient where they are, whether they have a parent or a trusted adult who can work with them, educating them about very important decisions that will impact their whole adult lives in terms of reproductive health.
Thank you very much. And then I thank you for coming back up. It was a helpful exchange of discussion. And I will say, just speaking as an individual, we continue to be concerned that not funding your organization properly is having a collateral effect that... your organization properly is having a collateral effect that, as you suggested, may not show up in the first year, second year, or third year, but it's going to be cumulative. And dealing in a Planned Parenthood facility against a federally qualified health center, it's a whole different experience of even how you access. So we'll continue this discussion, and your testimony did, was very helpful, and this was an honest exchange from all those on this committee. So what information requested of you, if you can provide, it'll be helpful. So when the Health Commissioner comes forward, Declan will pick up his line of questioning as well, and we'll see what happens. But thank you to both of you.
Thank you so much.
We're going to back up here a bit. Susan Delaney, understand us here, Susan. There you are. Please come forward. Susan is with the Coriel Institute of Medical Research, based in the city of Camden, a place where many, many magnificent things have occurred, including some of the early work on the polio vaccine, so many years ago that people tend to forget about. Susan, welcome. You're on the clock for four minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the Assembly Budget Committee, thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today to request continued grants and aid funding from the state of New Jersey to the Coriel Institute for Medical Research. My name is Susan Delaney, and I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Policy at the Coriel Institute. Based in Camden, New Jersey, Coriel Institute is a respected nonprofit research center where scientists are leading programs in precision medicine and cell biology, and is home to perhaps one of the world's largest biobanks, designed to support the research community and their mission to improve human health. With your permission, these remarks summarize our final testimony, which I hope will demonstrate that the state's continued investment in Coriel is continued investment in the biomedical leadership of New Jersey. I am pleased to report that Coriel Institute is projecting sixteen million dollars in new and continuing federal and non-federal revenue in two thousand and sixteen. With ten million dollars provided by the National Institutes of Health, this means that for every dollar invested in Coriel Institute by the state of New Jersey, the state will see a return on that investment of more than ten dollars in federal research dollars. Our partnership with the United States Air Force continues to flourish, and we are exploring several research questions related to sleep, obesity, and cardiopulmonary fitness. We've also been invited to collaborate with the newly-formed Total Exposure Health Team at Air Force to assist them in incorporating genetic information into their studies. Coriel has continued its commitment to the National Institutes of Health. This month, we attended the American College of Genetics and Genomics Annual Conference, and the reach of our work is evident at meetings like these. Researchers all across the country rely on Coriel's repository collections to advance their research. Your investment in Coriel is also an investment in education. Celebrating its thirty-fifth year this coming Saturday morning, the Coriel Science Fair will host more than three hundred students from grade six through twelve who attend schools in Burlington, Camden, and Gloucester Counties. We hope that their experiences competing in the Coriel Science Fair will encourage them to pursue their interests in the sciences. And finally, Coriel employs ninety-five scientists and staff with a gross payroll of nine million dollars, generating more than a hundred fifty thousand dollars in payroll taxes for the state. On behalf of Dr. Christman and the researchers of Coriel Institute, I respectfully request the state's continued support that provides us with the capacity to explore new research ideas, provide employment opportunities in the field of biomedical research, and to remain an anchor for first-class science in Camden, New Jersey. Mr. Chairman and members of the Assembly Budget Committee, thank you for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any members of the committee? Thank you so much. And if you can move with expedited steps on the Alzheimer's stuff, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely, making every effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We next have Melissa Thomelson, Executive Director. I've been waiting all day to say this, the Bad Ass Teachers Association. Is Melissa not here? That's unfortunate.
I was waiting.
Well, come back.
Yeah.
Thank you. How about, now bear with me, because I did have a note, we're combining a few names here. Oh, let's forgive me, because I'm on Natasha Rosario, but did someone, Natasha, are you here? Please come forward, Natasha. Camden Coalition Healthcare Providers. Well, it seems we just mentioned Camden City in the, in the previous group, so you joined us at a good time.
Exactly.
Welcome, Natasha. You have four minutes, and the clock is on.
Great. Good morning, esteemed members of the Assembly Budget Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Natasha Rosario. I'm Associate Counsel and Associate Director of Policy Engagement at the Camden Coalition of Healthcare Providers. I'm here today to ask for your support for the three-state certified Medicaid accountable care organizations, ACOs, in the FY two thousand and seventeen budget. In two thousand and eleven, the legislature passed, and Governor Christie signed into law, New Jersey PL two thousand and eleven, Chapter one fourteen, establishing a three-year Medicaid ACO demonstration project. The Medicaid ACO model coordinates the care of patients facing the greatest vulnerability and cost to the system. By creating interventions and supports around these patients, the ACO is a cost-effective way to overcome barriers to primary care and help patients receive the care that they, that actually can keep them well, and not just treat them from one crisis to the next as chronic conditions worsen, requiring ever more invasive, expensive, and risky treatment. In July two thousand and fifteen, the state approved the applications of three community-based nonprofits in Camden, Newark, and Trenton to become certified Medicaid ACOs under the demonstration project. Each ACO has obtained the support of a hundred percent of the hospitals, seventy-five percent of the primary care providers, and at least four mental health providers in our respective service areas. Each has built health information exchanges to allow the area providers to share patient health information. Up till now, we have done all of this important work without any dedicated state funding. We have worked diligently to secure funding from foundations and other partners, but without additional state support, we risk falling short of our objective to help Medicaid patients in our communities receive the care that they need. The Camden Coalition has already begun changing the lives of Medicaid beneficiaries in our community. The story of Peter Bowser highlights the ACO's ability to link our patients to the support services they need within the community. Through a supportive housing program known as Housing First, we have been able to connect chronically homeless, high utilizers of our healthcare system to housing. Peter Bowser was one such patient. Since suffering a near fatal asthma attack in the summer of two thousand and fourteen, fifty-one-year-old Peter visited the emergency department eighteen times and had fifteen hospitalizations in one year, which amounted to six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in hospital charges. But since being enrolled in our Housing First intervention six months ago, Peter has not returned to the hospital once. At present, the Camden ACO includes over thirty-five thousand capitated patients monthly, which is approximately half the city's population. Since becoming an ACO, we have scheduled close to four thousand provider visits and have made over seven thousand phone calls to patients. Backing from the state is urgently needed to recruit and retain qualified staff, support the information systems that we need, and execute quality improvement initiatives in these communities. There is currently a one-point-five-million line item, line item in the budget. The funding qualifies for a two-to-one match from the federal government for a total of three million for the Medicaid ACOs. We ask that you maintain this line item to support the Medicaid ACOs and ensure that we can fully realize the potential of our community organization to change the lives of the most vulnerable patients in New Jersey. Thank you again for your time today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Well spoken. Any questions? And I see none, so just for clarification, you're just clarifying the request to keep the number already in the budget in the budget?
Yes.
That's an easy one for us today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next up is Joseph Jones, Superintendent of Woodbury Public Schools. Hello, Superintendent.
Good morning.
Good morning to you. Almost afternoon, I guess we are afternoon, aren't we?
Yeah, we are.
For those who don't know, Woodbury is the county seat of the great county of Gloucester, and the public school system enjoys a fine reputation, so welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. We're very proud to serve the residents of Woodbury, and I'm actually here on their behalf. So glad to hear so much talk about SFRA. Assemblyman Singleton, thank you for your words about trying to do something about that, and all of you for listening today. Let me try not to be repetitive and try to share at least my perspective and a couple other pieces of information for you to consider. When the SFRA legislation was passed by the Corzine administration, it, the whole purpose was to address issues that faced Woodbury. Woodbury is a District Factor B, a school district. We were the poorest school systems. Abbott districts in those District Factor A clusters were receiving extra funding. The SFRA was supposed to have funds follow the most needy students. So the first year of funding under the Corzine administration, we received a twenty percent increase, one-point-nine million dollars, and we were supposed to receive that for the next two to three more years until we were brought up to our appropriate SFRA level of funding. So really, though, a couple of districts reported to you that their difficulties lie with the fact that they have increased enrollment, though that's true. Woodbury's case is steady enrollment, but we were supposed to be funded at an SFRA level. We were here at the time when the formula was passed, and we were never brought up to that level. We took one step towards it, but we're still very far short, five million dollars short, which is significant for our budget. Other districts, when that SFRA level comes about, were above that number. So even without reductions in enrollment, though that does cause for some people to have the over SFRA status, there are some who are just above SFRA levels. They were supposed to be brought down. The fact that we haven't made any change in that movement creates an ongoing concern. Yes, I agree. It takes guts, maybe, to make that change, but I'll tell you this. Here's my position, is that it's, it also takes a lot of audacity to keep underfunding Woodbury, Lindenwall, year after year. Howard Zinn's a historian, and he wrote a book, says he can't be neutral on a moving train. The years keep moving, and you're not neutral by not making a change. You're making a statement to the citizens of Woodbury and all these other communities that they don't matter getting their kids to that level. So it's really a tough, tough situation for us. Woodbury, we have probably one of the most interactive maps for you to take a look at for state funding. You can go on our website, and I've got some information I'm going to tell you that I gave to you today. But hold on for a minute before I get to that. On our website, there's a Funding Concerns link on the front page. It's a blue button. You click that, then there's another blue button for Statewide Concerns. And then you can find your legislative district, and you can click on that information, and you'll see all the school districts in your legislative districts that are below that eighty-five percent threshold, and those that are above. And the amount of monies for this current school year, that they are either below or above. Woodbury, five million dollars below, another school district right in Gloucester County, fourteen million dollars above. You know, and you heard some of these numbers from others. But you'll be able to see your legislative district, or you can do it county by county, that's the other option. It's really nice having a son who's a business intelligence major at St. Joe University, who's able to do all that tableau work for me, but it's, it's interesting for you to take a look at. One of the features that we actually embedded into that work is something that a colleague up in North Jersey, Newton, Sussex County, his name's Ken Green, he came up with this concept that i- if you're going to look at any school district, you should really look at the districts that are under adequacy and overtaxing their residents, because they can't get to adequacy. We're, Woodbury is one of the seventy districts in the state of New Jersey, that we can't get to adequacy because we're already overtaxing our residents. The only hope is you, the only hope is the state, to get our kids to adequacy. Our, our local residents have gone to the hundred percent and then beyond, and how much more can you go? There are some communities under adequacy that haven't gotten to that hundred percent of their local fair share. So my presentation to you includes a lot of the tableau information. The last page is a real quick synopsis. It shows twenty-nine of your legislative districts, contains the seventy school districts that are both under adequacy and overtaxed. There are in twenty-nine of forty of the legislative districts. I forget how many of the counties, a lot of the counties across the state, it's all color-coded. Here in South Jersey, District Five and Three heavily impacted, seven of the seventy districts fall in each of those counties. And then finally, before my time runs out, adequacy report comes to you, and they reduce the weights, again, you've got to vote that down. You voted it down last time, because that artificially just, well, it changes our adequacy numbers for Woodbury. Thank you.
Superintendent, thank you. Just a little bit of history. Chairman briefly spoke on it. I happened to sit on the last committee that heard the testimony when we overhauled the school funding formula. John Corzine was governor then.
Yeah.
This went off the tracks, in my opinion, when we hit the great financial crisis. This governor just committed to office. School funding unfortunately could not be maintained to the pure level of the formula. In fact, we hadn't really run it, I don't think, a hundred percent even at that point. And when the cuts were made, despite a number of calls to say, cut it proportionally, let it move with the formula, but just with the reduced money you have, we would not be in this position right today. Now, the legislature's going to have to speak, hopefully we will with one voice, because remember, the challenge politically, I don't mean with an R.D., is there are some districts that, if we go back and, and correct this, some districts are going to lose, some districts are going to be treated a little more fairly, and the districts that are going to lose have representatives as well. So this, this will be a tug of war, but the right thing to do is to get it right, and we need to do it. Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions? Everybody good? Thank you. Next is Michael Angola, thank you, Mike. I mispronounced your last name, I'm sorry. I got close. Stockton University. Anglo? Angola, thank you. Have you had any recently successful casino acquisitions?
Yes, we actually had a disposition of a casino recently.
Well, isn't that nice? Thank you.
Vice Chair.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon.
You're on the clock for four minutes. Thank you, Michael.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, and members of the Assembly Budget Committee. You have my written statement in front of you. Allow me to try to summarize this to meet my time.
And by the way, your basketball team's did very well this year.
Yes, we're very proud. Thank you. So today, Stockton exemplifies tremendous promise in southern New Jersey. Our fall two thousand and fifteen full-time equivalent enrollment of eight thousand two-hundred-and-seventy-four is eighteen percent greater than what it was in the fall of two thousand and ten. That rate is nearly three times the average of what our other senior public colleges and universities have experienced over that time. It is also important to note that of our entire student population, ninety-nine percent of our students are from New Jersey. Our, you know, amongst the, the many highlights of our recent institutional progress includes Stockton's graduation rate, which is substantially higher than both state and national averages. Our seventeen-to-one student-to-faculty ratio is among the most favorable in the sector. We continue to diversify our faculty, which is fifty-five percent women, twenty-three percent are ethnic minorities, and five percent are international scholars. Eighty-six percent of our recent graduates are either in graduate school or employed within six months of graduation. Just as important, Stockton graduates more than twenty percent of all science and math majors throughout the state, throughout the senior public colleges and university sector. Stockton is doing its part to keep higher education affordable. We have limited tuition and fee increases to an average of one-point-three percent per year over the past three years. Stockton also provides twelve million dollars annually in institutional aid towards student scholarships. This figure represents two-thirds of our direct appropriation from the state. A prior witness was here earlier talking about addressing dropout rates for high-risk individuals. Stockton is doing, you know, it's, it's a tremendous job in addressing that, mostly through working with those students and making sure that the resources are in place to help them in the event that they experience difficulties, particularly in their first and second year of college. So consistent with Stockton's public mission in providing academic opportunities for New Jersey students, Stockton is now establishing a campus in Atlantic City. This will include an academic building and a residence hall for five hundred and twenty-two students. Over four, the, the expansion in Atlantic City makes sense. Over four hundred Stockton students are presently in temporary housing placement due to limited on-campus housing. This figure could grow to five hundred by the fall of two thousand and sixteen. Only through increasing capacity can New Jersey stem the net outmigration of thirty-thousand-eight-hundred students each year and the resulting brain drain. Stockton's Atlantic City campus will keep more New Jersey students in New Jersey. Stockton's growing public charge requires equitable state support. The proposed FY seventeen state budget reflects a direct appropriation of eighteen-point-three-nine-one million dollars, or two thousand three hundred and eighty-four, per full-time student. This falls below the average of three thousand nine hundred dollars per full-time student at peer New Jersey senior public institutions. Moreover, the direct appropriation for FY seventeen does not take into consideration Stockton's recent growth or the Atlantic City campus. Stockton hopes that when this committee considers higher education funding, it will view favorably increasing the state's direct appropriation to Stockton, not only to minimize a historic funding disparity, but also to support the university's efforts to serve New Jersey students while playing a role in the region's future. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, very well done. Exciting news on the new campus, by the way.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
I was only half kidding about the casino side.
We were very fortunate to sell it for more than what we bought it for to help cover and defray our carrying costs.
Always a good thing. Any questions, anyone? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you very much for taking time with us. And next up is Tony Ahern. Tony, you can bring the baby if you like. It'll only lift the intellectual level of discussion, I'm sure, from this side of the table.
It's hard to get away from that baby.
No, you should bring the baby. It's okay. We're a very progressive group. Well, thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you very much for having me speak today. My name is Tanya Ahern. I am an advocate for families and their loved ones that struggle with substance use disorders. I'm also a mother, unfortunately not that baby, but I have a son who struggled for a co-occurring condition for the last nine years. Becoming an advocate actually changed my life, and put me in a position to really hear what's going on in the state. I get to, I'm very involved with NCAD New Jersey, I'm the Citizens Advisory Committee Chairperson for the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, and I volunteer for a program for a faith-based organization that's called ASAP, in the hospital in Cape May County, where when someone's brought in who has a substance use disorder, we're called in to talk to them. So I'm a peer, I'm actually a recovery coach and a peer specialist. We come into the hospital, we sit down with, and sometimes it's with the family as well, and we basically motivate them to wanna go to treatment. Of course, we all know the, you know, what's going on with treatment programs, and it's very hard to get people into treatment who are either underinsured or with Medicaid. So then we spend, well, we work with them until we get them into treatment. What I wanted to talk about is not exactly, not really what's not working, but what is working, and how we can expand it. There's, there are grants that have been given to different areas in this, like in five counties in the state, where they have recovery specialists that come into the hospital, just like we do, only they're paid. And it's really making a difference in trying to get people into treatment. Even if we can't get them into a program, we work with them until we do get them in. We have a 90% success rate in getting people to accept treatment, which is huge. It's very hard to do all this voluntary, and what I, you know, I know that the state has just met with the Board of Certification, and they're doing a certification process for the state for peer coaching, which is great, and then it will be able to be paid, a paid position, and I think that it's something that we should be looking at and expanding in the state, that everyone who goes to treatment or needs treatment gets a peer specialist to work with them, and help them through all of the barriers, because there are a lot. I also think that as a family member, there were years that I had no support, and I was so full of fear, and the stigma, you know, I mean, who goes around and tells people that your son is addicted to heroin? I mean, we were having a hard time dealing it with ourselves, how do we come clean and say that to everybody else? So the family support is huge, and I'm actually a parent, a national parent coach for the Partnership for Drug-Free Kids, where we will take phone calls from families who are new in this and have just learned about their child, or suspect there's something, and we give them tools. Because families don't have tools, it's not a normal process to go through this. I mean, nobody raises a child thinking they're going to have, you know, become a heroin addict. So I'm really, what I really would like is to see more of these programs get funded, where peer specialists are paid for, family coaches are paid for, and also recovery housing, where we can really work with people in a safe environment. So even if they can't get into inpatient treatment, they can be in outpatient treatment, and they can be in a safe environment where we can really work with them and give them the skills they need, because it's not just about treatment, it's about life skills. And there's so many of them that don't even know how to cook for themselves, to do laundry for themselves, because all those years where they would've learned that, they've been struggling with addiction. So I, you know, I think we're on the right track, there needs to be more funding towards that, and I'm happy that the state is going to put more money into these programs, but I just wanna make sure, though, that we put money into, I know, I know we're not gonna expand treatment, I already, Governor said that, but support would be great.
Thank you, Tanya, thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Any questions, comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is Megan Tinsley, Policy Director of New Jersey Audubon, is that Audubon Society? Is that the same?
Technically, we drop society.
You drop society?
Mm-hmm.
Why was that? It sounded so inclusive.
I'm not sure exactly, but...
You're welcome.
Officially known as New Jersey Audubon, but many people still call us New Jersey Audubon.
Sounds like a highway.
Well, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and members of the Budget Committee. Again, I'm Megan Tinsley, Policy Director, New Jersey Audubon, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today, and my focus will be on the Department of Environmental Protection portion of the Governor's proposed budget. New Jersey Audubon is a privately supported, not-for-profit, statewide membership organization comprised of approximately 20,000 members, promoting the preservation of New Jersey's valuable habitats, and we all have roughly 50 full-time staff across the state. And we also coordinate the New Jersey Keep it Green Coalition comprised of approximately 185 member organizations, which worked to support the ballot measure in November 2014 to dedicate open space funding in the state. We are cognizant of the limited funds in the state for the many worthwhile causes that you've heard about all this morning. However, because our environment is critically linked to protecting and growing our economy, we must also consider it as a top priority. Our future, the health of our citizens, and quality of life depend on clean water, locally grown foods, tourism, and access to parks. As you know, in November 2014, voters of the state overwhelmingly supported permanently dedicating a portion of the corporate business tax toward open space preservation and stewardship. And it's vital that we ensure that these funds as dedicated by voters are protected and used appropriately. In the past, funds which were supposed to provide for new projects and support on-the-ground efforts, or were intended to go to county and local programs, have instead been used to supplant financial obligations of the state by paying for existing staff salary and by funding maintenance projects. Budgets and staff support from the general fund have continued to be reduced. This year's budget appears to do the same, and demonstrates why passing implementing legislation to allocate funds under the corporate business tax is so vitally important, to ensure that the funds are not diverted to inappropriate uses such as routine operations and maintenance, and are used instead to support preservation and stewardship as the voters intended. For example, we are particularly concerned about the proposed use of 19.972 million in these voter-approved CBT funds for state park management and staffing, approximately 307 park staff positions. And while no one more than New Jersey Audubon could argue for the importance of state parks and adequately staffing them, this is actually an inappropriate use of the dedicated CBT funds. Stewardship does not include things such as routine operations and maintenance, such as cutting the grass. Instead, these items should be supported through the general fund as they have been in the past, and the roughly $20 million in CBT funds should instead be allocated to the preservation and stewardship project through the green acres, farmland, and historic preservation programs as the New Jersey voters intended. Dividing up the funds this way through the yearly appropriations process does not provide the transparency, predictability, and reliability that is required to guide the strategic investment of the state. This is why implementing legislation is required. And we do appreciate that efforts have been made to minimize cuts overall at DEP, and we recognize, again, the dire fiscal situation of the state. Previous cuts have been disproportionately placed on our environment, and they do continue to gravely impact the ability of the department to do its vital work. The overall department budget is once again reduced this year approximately by 2.1%. So we've seen staffing decreases at DEP as well, over the past decade or so, going from around 4,000 to roughly 2,800 staff, and that is impacting the ability of the department to adequately protect our clean air and clean water. So to conclude, we continue to say that we have to invest in our natural capital in the state. If we do not provide for this investment, we will experience a decline in our natural resources, and these benefits that are provided to our residents such as clean air and clean water, safe places to stay. It also will experience a loss of revenue.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, well presented. Any questions, anyone? Thanks, seeing none.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, we have Andrea Katz, Chesterfield Elementary School. Andrea, are you here? Do you have others with you, just yourself, or?
I have one more member.
You're welcome to come up. We have three seats, four seats if we need it, we only have one microphone now. Welcome to everyone. I had a chance to glean your testimony, it's remarkably similar to the other districts, Lindenwall, Woodbury, those who were in front of us, about how this funding formula is just finally really out of whack at this point. So you have the advantage of those speaking in front of you, getting the committee up to speed, so anything you can add, your particular details, it's all very helpful. So please, you have four minutes collectively.
Thank you. My name is Andrea Katz, and I'm a resident of Chesterfield Township, and I have the distinct privilege of serving on the Chesterfield Township Board of Education. We have our Superintendent here, Mr. Haino, and my fellow board member, Peggy Hallian. Chesterfield is a small town, we have approximately 8,000 residents, and based upon percentages of state funding, we anticipate being the most underfunded district in the entire state next year. Using the anticipated enrollment numbers and aid numbers, we will only be getting 11% of the aid that we should. We are already overtaxing our residents by close to $1 million, which doesn't seem like a lot, but when you're a small town, that's more than 10% of fair share. Yes, it's a lot of money. Because they seem like small numbers, but again, because we're a small town.
They're not small at all.
No. Our adequacy budget is over $10 million, and our operating budget for this year is less than $9 million, so we're spending over $1 million less under adequacy. Last year in aid, we only, we received just over $400,000, and we should've gotten 2.8 million. So that's a lot of money that we're not receiving, we're getting an additional $16,000 next year, and while we're grateful for any increase, it's only a drop in the bucket. And it's easy to chalk these gaps up to not having money in the state. You know, I know that there's a lot of money, there's not a lot of money to go around, but as you discussed earlier, our issues are not the issues across the state. There are 578 school districts in the state, 196 of them are receiving more than 100% of their uncapped funding, and 259 districts are receiving more than the 85% that the formula's currently being funded at. That leaves about 319 districts that are underfunded in the state. I provided in my written testimony, I'm in the 12th Legislative District, two districts that are being overfunded, and some of the things that they're experiencing that I've looked through the newspapers and through their user-friendly budgets. One of the districts is getting 12 million more than they should, they were able to decrease taxes, and they actually got an increase in aid over the past few years. It's just, but that's not what we're dealing with, we're pinching pennies, and we're trying to make very difficult financial decisions that we wouldn't have to make. And Mr. Haino can speak to sort of the, what's on the ground.
So with our growth, as we grow each year...
Introduce yourself for the record.
I'm sorry, sir. Scott Haino, Superintendent, Chesterfield School District.
God, welcome. If you can, if you cannot be repetitive of something to add that's helpful, believe me, this issue has the full attention of this group.
Yes, sir, thank you. Just wanted to outline some of the areas where it hurts a district like Chesterfield. Increased class size, special education schedules that are so tight where a special education student may have one teacher for math on one day, and another teacher for the same subject area on a different day because of schedules. Lack of instructional resources, loss of programs, unable to grow programs, aging technology, technology so old it can't even be used for park testing. Part-time counselor for a school of close to 800 students, a wireless infrastructure that can't even handle the technology that we do have. These are all the things that are happening to us on a daily basis, and as a group here, that may not mean a lot to you as a school district.
It means a lot.
Yeah, as a school district, there's so many implications because of these cuts that reach out far beyond just what's written here on this page. And we're not sitting here in front of you today to say, fund the formula, we know that's not possible, we're just saying, give us our fair share.
It's a reasonable request. Now, we have one more person, a parent has joined you as well, if you care to add to the record.
Mrs. Hallian's one of our other board members.
Would you care to add something that we haven't heard, or just like to lend your voice?
The only thing I would like to say is, we are a very small town, we are a farming community that has grown immensely in the last 10 years. We are feeling the crunch terribly, and as we have stated, we are the least funded state in, stated, community in the state of New Jersey. We only get 11%.
And I'll say to you, and thank you, by the way, my mother served on Board of Education for years as well, I think we may have reached a tipping point in this discussion, when you look at the number of schools that are not nearly 85%, so this is almost like, for those who served in municipal government, a tax reevaluation issue, never pleasant to do, but it's gonna have to happen, and when you do it, there's 50% win, 50% don't win. If we reallocate, if we can convince the Governor's Office and the Department of Education to move the money around to get at least people close to 85% as possible, it's gonna be equally people unhappy, the district you mentioned at 12 million, but we've got a big issue here. This is a matter of fairness, you guys gotta stay in business collectively, so the message is heard today. Anyone care to add anything? We're good, thank you.
I've all mentioned that, that it's a hot political issue, so we do understand that, but that's...
We'll figure it out, yeah. You have to keep talking to all your representatives in your district, you've got good people representing you, make sure they know to speak up to the Governor's Budget Process. We have a couple of months to go here, so there's time. But go to work, keep working. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank you to Assemblyman Singleton in advance for what you're doing, but in my written testimony, I included all of the districts, in each of your legislative districts that are being underfunded by the 85%, so we're all affected by this.
Very smart approach to your testimony.
Thank you.
Gets our attention, thank you.
Brilliant.
Thank you. Let's see, I lost my list. The Chairman has returned.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, and I apologize for my delay. Next, Kim Barnes, please, from Lord's Health System, to be followed by John Saab. Is Kim here? Thank you again, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman, Chair, Mr. Vice Chairman, Bert Chitelli, and members of the committee. My name is Kim Barnes, I'm Vice President of Planning and Development for Lord's Health System, and I'm representing the hospitals at Lord's in Camden and Willingboro, New Jersey, as well as St. Francis Medical Center in Trenton today. I'm also the current Chair of the Camden Coalition of Healthcare Providers. I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and thank you for coming to our neighborhood, a Lord's neighborhood here in Collingswood. As you're aware, last week, the Senate President asked New Jersey hospitals to provide 10 years of financial information, so that he could get a clearer understanding of the physical health of the state's hospitals. Our three hospitals are critical urban safety net hospitals in New Jersey and the acute care hospital network, and we're more than happy to comply with that request. We hope that the Senate President shares the information we provide with all members of the community of this committee, so that you have an understanding of the precarious financial cliff upon which many of the state's urban safety net hospitals are perched, and that this, and responding to the Governor's Hospital funding proposal further impacts that position. When you look at the data submitted by the hospitals, and compare that with information on the hospital funding provoked, proposed by the Governor's Budget, here's what you'll find. Numerous hospitals, which are not struggling financially and are located in urban centers, are rewarded with a net gain of about $30 million on what they were given last year. And many of those hospitals are fairly well-off financially, are given additional funding over and above last year's allocation, despite the overall reduction of $150 million in hospital funding. You'll find that urban safety net hospitals, which the data submitted to the Senate President will confirm are, and are already struggling, include Lord's Health System and St. Francis Medical Center, who take a huge financial hit in this budget. No more is that rich, the rich get richer, the poor get poorer scenario more pronounced than at St. Francis Medical Center in Trenton, which is being asked to absorb a $5 million cut in funding, and in the last two years, it's been a $9.3 million cut in state aid. Our Lady of Lord's Medical Center in Camden is suffering a $2 million loss in funding, and our community hospital, Lord's Medical Center Burlington County in Willingboro, a $2.4 million cut. So among our three hospitals, it's a $10 million reduction in funding. As the Chair of the Camden Coalition of Healthcare Providers, I understand fully well what we're trying to accomplish in urban areas through the expansion of Medicaid and the ACO efforts, the efforts to keep vulnerable populations out of the emergency rooms and in the most appropriate settings for care. This effort happens over time, it's, you don't just flip a switch and it happens, and so we really need that funding to get to that gradual transition. Otherwise, we're really jeopardizing the ability for our hospitals to navigate this transition. And in this, and I know it's a matter for another committee, but you should also know that when you look at the hospitals and their financial position, and compare that to the Tier Two hospitals that are in the OMNI network, you'll see a lot of the same hospitals and, that are having revenue diverted away from them through the OMNI product. And so we really think that the two issues that are critical here is the lack of the cap and the establishment of a cliff. Without a cap, there are many hospitals that are getting more money in this funding formula, and if you had asked a hospital executive a year ago if they'd get any more money from charity care funding, I'm sure nobody would've expected that. And so then, as a result, the hospitals that are...
You'll forgive me, I've just noticed the red light is on.
Okay.
Lord's certainly has been an instrumental member of the healthcare community. Lord's certainly has been an instrumental member of the healthcare community here in South Jersey, and we most appreciate the issues which you've raised. How much is the cut in his bonds that Lord's would anticipate if this budget is adopted as...
So for the two Lord's facilities, it's $4.4 million, and for St. Francis Medical Center, it's $5 million.
Questions? Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for being here today. Next, please, Mr. John Saab. Mr. Saab is here. Please. Mr. Saab will be followed by Dorothy Smith. Mr. Saab, before you begin, if there is anyone who would like to address this committee, and you've not already had the pleasure to do so, we would ask you to please fill, to contact the Office of Legislative Services to my right and your left to have your name added to our list. Mr. Saab?
Hi. Good afternoon, Chairman Chair, members of the Budget Committee. My name is John Saab. I am and have been a school maintenance, building maintenance employee for the past 25 years in the Pine Hill School District here in Camden County. I'm here today to speak about the need to fund our schools appropriately, specifically in regard to the facility's maintenance. As a building maintenance employee, I've been, I've given a responsibility that I take very seriously. My number one focus is to keep the learning environment safe and comfortable for our children so that they may get the most out of their educational programs. I'm deeply saddened and concerned when I see that decisions made in Trenton regarding school funding trickle down to the point where districts are forced to lower the expectations of what a clean and safe learning environment is. When a district is faced with either cutting programs or cutting operational cost, you're really giving them no choice but to slash the operational cost. The first thing that occurs is replacing products used with cheaper, less effective, and less safe products. Next, the inventory of maintenance products is cut to the point where instead of being proactive when addressing concerns, districts are forced to be reactive and repairs are left waiting for funds or parts are in order. Then the final blow is the point in which the district resorts to having, to cut custodial maintenance staff. Once you start to lose these people, you not only lose manpower, but you lose the knowledge of the buildings. The foundation of future repairs, upgrades, and daily operation is then put to risk because the resource and knowledge base is no longer available to assist in decision-making and smart, smart spending options. Like most change, the impact is not instant. It is instead a slow and quiet process, meaning the inhabitants of the building, our children, become used as substandard environment. Are we okay with that? I'm the person with the boots on the ground, and I see this happening right in front of me, right in front of my eyes. So anyone interested in convincing me that this is not happening is wasting their time. This is an issue in any district, but is more so in a district with less access to funding. I'm asking you, leaders of our great state, to empower me and my working peers to do what we're paid to do, and give back to our children the opportunity to have a safe, clean, and healthy learning environment so our institutions can propel our children to the highest level possible in adulthood. Winston Churchill said, "We shape our buildings thereafter they shape us." Let us not allow our children to be shaped by substandard expectation. Please fund our schools. Any, anyone have any questions?
Mr. Saab, thank you, sir, very, very much. You raised some important issues here in terms of the net effects of declinations in funding. Any questions for Mr. Saab, please? Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for your time.
Dorothy Smith? Is Ms. Smith here? How about Richard Alexander? Mr. Alexander is Addiction Recovery Management.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify, to provide testimony for supporting budget priorities for the upcoming fiscal year. My name is Rich Alexander, and I own a consulting firm, Addiction Recovery Management and Marketing LLC. And I do consulting in the addiction recovery field, preferably in non-clinical organizations. Also, I'm a person in long-term recovery, which means I haven't had a drink or a drug in 26 years. I provided testimony last year and really talked about my recovery success story. I can add one thing to the success story, and that is my wife and I had a baby girl who she had to drop off here, I didn't expect her to be here, three and a half months ago. So it's, you know, it's hard for most people to understand, you know, that how I ever survived this disease of addiction is beyond me. You know, I'm just very fortunate. Now that we have a baby, you know, it really has deepened my gratitude for survival. But this year, I want to do something a little different. I want to get right to the success of treatment. And people doubt that treatment works and actually have evidence that it doesn't work. And what I'm here to tell you is that treatment works, and it can work at the 90-plus percentile for those that are provided treatment and all the services necessary for ongoing recovery. And I know it's hard to believe, but it's true. And so where would I find statistics in the 90-plus percentile of success? And the answer is the New Jersey Bar Association. Okay? So here's a quote from an article on the New Jersey Lawyers Assistance Program website. "It works, and it's free." "New Jersey Lawyers Assistance Program has access to a statewide network of psychologists, counselors, doctors, and other professionals. The program reports a 97 percent success rate in treating alcohol and drug abuse since its inception, December 1, 1993." Hold on. Hold on. I'm also an alumni of the Rutgers Alcohol and Other Drug Assistance Program. And if you want to learn more about that, I suggest you come to the graduation in May in Piscataway. But they also have a 90-plus percent success rate with their people that are recovering from addiction. Doctors' associations have the same success rate, and they're offered free, right? So when someone calls, they get help. So the more than 800,000 citizens in the state who have an alcohol or drug problem, only 5 to 7 percent are provided treatment. You know, so what if 100 percent of people were provided the treatment, lawyers, doctors, and many union workers are provided? So if a New Jersey attorney that is having issues with alcohol and drugs reached out for help today, they would receive immediate help, regardless if they had insurance or not. And however, that's not the case for those suffering in the general population. And so in my assessment, if you're an attorney with an alcohol and drug problem, and you reach out for help, which is important, your projected lifespan would be longer than that of the general population that suffers from addiction. So I request that each of you reach out to the New Jersey Lawyers Association Program and learn how that organization that you're a part of is having such success. And so please give more opportunity, you know, for people like me to live a life of prosperity and recovery. And thanks for all your hard work. I appreciate it.
Mr. Saab, thank you, sir, very, very much for your testimony. You are a credit, and I know that I'm speaking on behalf of all of my colleagues to everything that we're trying to do here in New Jersey. Your 26 years of recovery is certainly an amazing, amazing statement, almost as amazing as the beautiful young lady you have on your shoulder.
Exactly.
Any questions, please, from Mr. Alexander?
Thank you for being here. I'm going to, I'm going to hunt that down. That's interesting.
I appreciate it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please, Mr. Joel Johnson, Compass Academy Charter. Let me reiterate, if you've not signed up on the list, please do. Mr. Johnson is the last person that I have on my list who wishes to speak to this committee. Mr. Johnson?
So we few, we happy few. Thank you very much for allowing me to come and speak to you. My name is Joel Johnson. I am the lead founder of Compass Academy Charter School. We are a regional charter school in Cumberland County. We're headquartered in Vineland. We take students from Millville, Vineland, and Pitts Grove in the surrounding area. And as I've said earlier, I'm sure you know it by now, that Cumberland County has the highest unemployment, the highest illiteracy, and the highest poverty of all the counties in New Jersey. But I'm not here to talk about that. I want to talk about our school, and I want to talk about the funding issue. Compass Academy is unique. We have, we educate, we help teach our children about how they learn, to help them take in the world around them, make sense of it, and respond appropriately. We do that through a research-based, innovative, advanced learning system called Let Me Learn Process. We also have monthly Making Sense Days. So every month, we take the classroom instruction outside of the classroom. We're putting it into hands-on activities so the kids are able to connect that classroom learning into real-world experience. And we also then are engaged in the community every month through service learning projects. So every month, throughout that month, the students are working on different projects. Maybe they're making, they're baking dog biscuits for the local, you know, animal shelter, or they're knitting blankets for a senior home, so on and so forth. And as amazing as those students are, and that the work that we're doing there is, there is a key issue about funding. And, Mr. Chairman, you asked the question about, aren't charter schools funded at 90 percent? And that is the goal, but in reality, it's not happening. There is, you have a base pupil funding, and that's what's included as the 90 percent. We receive actually less than 90 percent. We receive less than 90 percent of the security aid per pupil. And then there's aid that we're not allowed to have. We're not allowed to have facility aid. We're not allowed to have transportation aid, ironically, because when, at the 90 percent, that 10 percent is supposed to go to transportation. But we don't get any transportation aid either. We also don't get park readiness funding. Even though we're expected to take the park, we're held at a higher standard than Vineland Public Schools in order, in terms of our results. But we don't get any funding to help get those students ready, whether it's technology or whatever. But the biggest sleight of hand, and it's been kind of bandied about multiple times from other traditional public schools, is the adjustment aid. Aid that, as far as I can tell, comes down to politics, and different districts are getting money, others are not. Vineland gets $34 million in adjustment aid, but that is aid that while we're not, while as a charter school, we're not prohibited from having, but we're also not entitled to. So Vineland has no reason to actually pass that on to us. And that's a huge difference. Our per pupil, just on the state aid, is $6,400, $6,500. If we included the adjustment aid, we'd be close to $10,000. And as you see in my written testimony on that last page, it's rather significant impact. So I just ask that, I'm very happy to see or to hear that the committee is, this is becoming a bigger issue in terms of the funding. I just ask that the state funding follow the student, and, so that we can make it a fair and just educational funding system and formula for not just the children in Cumberland County, but also in New Jersey. So thank you very much for taking the time.
Mr. Johnson, thank you for being here. You're the lead founder?
Yes. That does not mean I'm the principal. I'm just, I'm kind of the, was the person that kind of was starting the founding group, and I just kind of watch over the school. But I don't have to run the school, thankfully. I just enjoy watching the kids and the teachers engage, and the parents engage, and the community get the benefit from our experience there.
And there are 177 children currently in the school?
Mm-hmm. And next year, we are aiming to get to 228, because we will now, we will expand from fourth grade to fifth grade, and then we'll move a whole new group of kindergarten students in.
And the students, what is the geographic area from which...
Primarily, I would say about, 90 percent of our students come from the city of Vineland. We get a small percentage, a small number of students that come from Millville, and we have three that come from Pitts Grove. But we also have students that come from Newfield, Buena, we have a couple from Morris River. So we actually have surrounding. As long as we're able to bring in 90 percent from our sending districts that we've listed in our contract, which is what a charter is, then we're able, we're allowed to bring in other students, so...
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. Questions, please? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Have a good day, everyone.
And thank you for your kind patience. I don't have anyone else who would like to address the, this committee? Is there anyone else who would like to address? See none at this time? For members of the committee, our next public hearing will be held on Monday, March 21st, in Trenton at 9:30. We look forward to your joining with us at that time. This meeting is adjourned.